I don't have check bags.
What's up, Shane?
So, Mikey.
Okay. Okay, Deo, I'll recognize him if he's here.
It's Deo.
Okay. This we have a proclamation for what it's, okay. Okay, but the chief will be giving that, right? Oh, okay, okay. Is there anything else that changed from here? Okay. So that is E. Okay. Okay, okay. All right, I'll go by this one. I just kind of highlight them just so that I can eyeball them.
At the beginning of the meetings, we have such full houses and then later we're staring at one person.
Or at each other.
At each other.
Okay.
No, you didn't, but. Okay.
I have two at home. We're good.
Continue the meeting.
Sounds good.
How far apart are they?
Sounds good. Sounds good. You missed a good part.
About twenty months apart. If you just like.
It's a yellow.
Yeah. Thanks, man. On here?
Do you have the other assignment sheet, Anna, the ones that are specific to the items?
Sure. Waiting for anyone? Nope, oops, already?
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
I think your mic is up here.
I think, are your mics on?
Test, test, one, two.
No, they're not.
Hearing mine is. Test, one, two, test, test. Now.
All right, let's start over.
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Santin?
Here.
Councilman Bahet?
Here.
Councilman Vazquez?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
You. If you are able, please rise and join us in the invocation by Councilman Bahet.
We pray this evening for the agenda set forth before us and ask that we be granted the ability to work together in harmony when there is honest disagreement and dissent. We ask for the strength to speak up when given the opportunity to speak and the patience to listen receptively and empathically when it's time to listen. We ask for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues that we encounter.
President. To the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to our March eleventh city council meeting. It's nice to always start the meeting seeing so many happy faces. And also, we welcome anyone that's joining us virtually. So we're going to get started with our awards and presentations and our first award is honoring Police Sergeant Gary Fellers for his retirement after twenty-five years and eight months of dedicated service to our city.
Evening, council. City manager. Come on, get up here.
Deo, can you put the mic closer?
Sergeant Fetters began his career here in June nineteen ninety-eight. He's one of the few officers left that I worked with in the nineties. He worked the road for some time, later on became a detective and then was promoted to sergeant where he did excellent. We're losing a a good man and a good officer. Enjoy retirement, my friend. And good luck to you. Yes, you do. Leaving the mic is never a good idea, to be honest. It could be a roast. I look around the room, all the guys, girls here in uniform, born after ninety-eight. Hold up your hand for me. After ninety. Okay, not as many as I thought, so I don't feel too bad. I'm like. Okay, how about up here? Anybody? No?
Absolutely.
Sixty-eight. Okay. I'd like to thank everybody that's here today. My, speaking back when I started here, Will Fowler. You don't look a day over seventy now. Wife, Adrian, I've known since I've been here. Going back to ninety-eight. That's about it. That's any closer than you'd have to pay me. But, um. Okay. It's been a heck of a run. One thing I can tell you, I did do very well, I think I represented the city in the uniform, the badge, about as well as anybody could. So I leave here with that. And knowing that I leave good representatives here in my wake, you know, carry on as I did. So that is about the, all you can ask for. And I'd like to thank my daughters for being here, especially my daughter Chelsea right there, looking lovely. She came down from Palm City. And I think we're gonna go have dinner now. Thank you all.
Sergeant, we have something for you.
Wait, hold on.
From the council.
Yeah, the FOP.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll say. Yeah, yeah.
Back in the day, it used to be.
We're gonna stand back here.
Thank you, Deo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergeant Fetters.
Paul Poken has a memory of twenty-five years. If you think back to twenty-five, well, some of us, I know, some of you can't remember that long, but most of us have been thinking back twenty-five years, Miami Springs, what a different city we are now. And I would say definitely we've been better, we've been improving and the Dallas area, yes, the best years are still coming. So Sergeant, for all of your serving us, I can't even imagine the experiences that you had in twenty-five years. We're extremely grateful for your service, appreciative, and we hope you'll stay and visit with us. Are you moving away or are you staying here? Enjoy. You wanna take a photo with your family? Let's see.
Yes.
With the chief? Yes, Ross. You're really good. And let's get on with all.
I wanted to go to a session. Go on, come on, come on.
Yes, 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 yes. Go in the back. I would like to invite all of the police department, uh, Sergeant, headed by your chair. I can see how they're gonna mess up.
Get back here before. Slide, slide.
Yes.
Is that Mike?
Sorry, I moved you over, Chief.
No, it's fine, it's fine. Not gonna. Move it back, we got two more to go.
Okay, so our next agenda item, this is very exciting, we have three wonderful presentations or ceremonies for the police department. And our next one is the promotion ceremony by Chief Deo of Police Officer Brian Nickerson to Police Agent.
Like myself, Brian is a born and raised current resident of Miami Springs. He attended Springfield Elementary, Blessed Trinity, well, I won't hold out against you, and Miami Springs Senior High School graduated in twenty-twelve. He became a public service aide here with us in twenty thirteen. Then we sent him to the police academy in twenty fourteen. Graduated in twenty fourteen. He's since become an officer in charge where he works as in the place of a sergeant. He has been awarded Officer of the Month Award four times and also Officer of the Year one time.
Thanks.
Ladies and gentlemen, Sergeant Brian Nickerson.
Hey, thank you, Chief. All the officers and the administration that came out and friends and family, I appreciate you guys. Also Sergeant Fetters, he was the first person I wrote with when I was a PSA, back when I was nineteen years old. So it's a bittersweet moment to see you from the beginning, by beginning of becoming a sergeant, so I appreciate you a lot, thank you.
Sergeant Nickerson, thank you for serving and protecting the citizens and the community of Miami Springs. We're greatly appreciative. And now we have a promotion ceremony again by Chief Deo of Police Lieutenant Frank Perez to Police Captain.
Lieutenant Perez began his career here with the Miami Springs Police Department as a police dispatcher in two thousand and two. He went on to go to the police academy in two thousand and four, graduated in two thousand and five. He was promoted to sergeant in two thousand and eleven and later promoted by former Chief Boozman in two thousand and sixteen to the rank of lieutenant. Ladies and gentlemen, Captain Frank Perez.
Congratulations, Captain, thank you for serving and protecting our residents in our city. Captain, would you like to say anything?
First of all, I'm extraordinarily grateful for the opportunity that's been given to me by Chief Deo. I will do everything by power to make sure that he does not regret it. But I also wanted to thank all my loved ones, all my family, all my friends. I would not have been able to accomplish anything that I have accomplished in this life without their constant love and support. And I feel extraordinarily blessed for that. And also, thank you to all of the people that I work with. It's because of them that we've been able to do as much as we have done and we continue to do every day. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Captain, congratulations.
Yeah, whatever, just, yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
No, we love it. Thank you to everyone in our police department at all levels. Our community is deeply grateful for your service and protection. Hey, our next agenda item is, we are proclaiming. We are proclaiming the month of March as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. And I wanted to give a little background as to, as mayor, I get often reached out from organizations asking us to proclaim, you know, this and that, and we can't do everything, but there are sometimes certain issues that are timely, that need awareness, that need attention, and in a small way, proclaiming proclaiming an item. Giving a proclamation for an item is a way to provide awareness, to bring issues that are sometimes kind of shade issues out into the open so that we know that there's resources for them also, because just as important as recognizing that there's a problem is acknowledging that there are resources available to that person and making all of us aware of how we can help. So this month, we are proclaiming the month of May as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and I want to read the proclamation. And if you've kept up lately, this is something that's come to my attention within the past year or something, as as gaming has become more popular, more widely accepted, it's no longer, you know, a dark casino, a smoky casino or something, it's sports betting and, you know, and online. And so it's become very acceptable fun, enjoy, something that, you know, we talk about openly. There's also been a very significant rise in problem gambling and gambling addiction, particularly in young people that see this as, you know, I started doing this with, as fun, and very quickly, it can become a slippery slope where it becomes gambling becomes a significant problem. So we are proclaiming March Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and I'm going to read the proclamation because I do want to bring attention to this. Whereas problem gambling is a serious public health issue affecting one to three percent of the general adult population and often results in personal, financial, familial, legal, and other costs, including a high risk of suicide. And whereas it is estimated that over two hundred thousand Florida adults of diverse age, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status suffer from past year gambling problems. And seven hundred thousand more are at risk of developing such difficulties, constituting four point seven percent of the adult population ages eighteen and older. And where it is further important to note that these statistics do not account for youth who are increasingly and deceptively exposed to gambling concepts and are at an increased risk for developing gambling-related problems. Whereas it is also essential to recognize problem gambling as a societal issue with eight to ten additional people adversely impacted by every problem gambler. And the point with that is it's not just the problem gambler, it's their family, their children, their business that suffers. Where was I? With eight to ten, increasing the affected population by an estimated additional one point five million individuals who suffer the consequences of problem gambling with conservative projected social cost amounting to more than nine billion dollars nationally each year. And whereas problem gambling is treatable for those who seek help, which minimizes the harm to Floridians and to the state as a whole. And whereas the Florida Council on Compulsive Gambling's Public Awareness Campaign provides an opportunity to educate the public, policymakers, educators, businesses, mental health, and criminal justice professionals and others about the potential adverse effects of gambling, as well as social, legal, financial, and emotional impacts and available supports. And whereas free referrals to problem gambling resources and supports, including to licensed and certified treatment providers, self-help support groups, an online program for problem gambling, and the FCCG's Floridians, Problem Gambling Association, by calling or texting eight eight eight, admit it. And whereas any individual, professional, or other organizations dedicated to assisting those in need can participate in raising awareness and preventing problem gambling by promoting the statewide confidential toll-free and twenty-four-hour problem gambling helpline, eight eight eight, admit it. And whereas the city of Miami Springs can demonstrate its support in addressing problem gambling by raising public awareness through the declaration of proclamation of the month of March, twenty twenty-four, as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in the city of Miami Springs. Now therefore, I, Maria Puente Mitchell, mayor of the city of Miami Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of March, twenty twenty-four, as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in the city of Miami Springs. do hereby proclaim the month of March, two thousand and twenty-four, as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in the City of Miami Springs. And I urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. So thank you so much for allowing me the to read this to you. I hope that um that we do raise awareness to this, particularly learn our young, who are the most at risk of it's a different concept now of something that's so accepted and by the time it becomes a problem um they can be quite deeply affected in their family also. Do we have someone here from this organization, Erica? Okay, all right, we'll get this to them. All right, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, and this is our Yard of the Month Award. And this month for March, two thousand and twenty-four, the Yard of the Month is two eighty-nine Shadow Way. The home of our longtime residents, Theo and Diana, are you here?
Theo's here.
Hi, Theo, do you want to come up? Do you? Okay. You have a very diverse yard. I know you're always planting and out there. Come on up. You want to say something? Well, do you want to say something about your yard? I know you are very knowledgeable in.
Thank you. Thank you to the city for for this award. Um, it means a lot to our family, especially to my wife. We spend mo- and my and both of my sons, especially my youngest son who has autism. He um, he earned a horticulture degree from Miami Dade College and um and the yard, it's it's his world. So in the back, um, we have all sorts of things back there. And when you see the gate open, all of you are welcome to pop in and we may, we can talk plants.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go look, cause I talk plants, actually.
And and I want to say he's serious about that. You can stop by and he loves to show you his yard. Thank you, Theo. I want to remind everyone, the address is two eight nine Shadow Way. So this month, be sure to stop by, drive by, but in this case, normally I say just drive by. In this case, I know that Theo would love for you to stop and visit, so please do. Thank you, Theo.
Will touch base with that one.
Okay, we move now to open forum. We have several people signed up for open forum to speak at open forum. I just want to remind everyone that open forum is um a means for anyone to speak to us, to the council about anything, anything that you want to speak about. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. Um, and we're all ears during open forum. We listen and you have our undivided attention. It is literally one-way communication. We listen, we don't respond, but you have all of us at one time hearing your concerns, uh whatever you want to talk to. If you want to discuss something further afterwards, please reach out. You can reach out to any of us individually or to our city manager, city clerk, and they will assist you um further with the issue. Okay, so please um leave your comments, maintain your comments. I'm going to ask for two minutes. Erica will time you and when you hear the little ringer, it's um uh time for the next guest. Okay, so we're starting with Stephen Owens.
Hey, good evening, uh mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Stephen Owens, born and raised here in Miami Springs, and now I'm raising my own kids in Miami Springs. And I brought my daughter Bianca with me. Um, I'm here to speak out in support of Matchpoint Tennis. Um, I think it's a great tennis program. It's a vibrant youth program, youth community program. And if you don't believe me, go by the tennis courts any evening, weekday evening, Monday through Friday, uh four P M. to seven P M. and you'll see for yourself. Just sit down there for a minute or just listen, you know, sit on the park bench, listen to the kids playing tennis and uh you'll see and listen to the coaches too and how they interact with the children. They really care for the children. I think we need to keep this program. This is a good program. Um, I, you know, just the warm-up drills, everything, it's great. And as a matter of fact, it's not just the the kids in Miami Springs, uh kids from all over the city come to to join this tennis program. So it's a good tennis program. Um, as far as uh this, you know, contract being up for bid and and other proposals being being made made to you all. Um, I know that, you know, you you do have difficult decisions to make, but this is an established program that has been here for over for fifteen years, uh to my understanding. And um, it's been built up. So if you're gonna make any changes to it, my suggestion would be go back to to the old way of having city employees in Parks and Recreation run the tennis courts if there's an issue with with budgetary issues or whatever. But another point that I made last time is that every single Parks and Recreation facility has been rebuilt since two thousand and ten, except for the tennis courts. And if you go to the tennis courts, you go into the bathroom, you go into the office, you go into the racquetball courts, you'll see it's from the mid nineteen hundreds. And yes, it's they they crack, they they have, so the only way to redo it would be like, you know, revamping kind of like what you're doing to the golf course where you, you know, you dig it out and you put the the limestone fill and then you, you know, level it again. But I think that saving a buck on, you know, contracting to a different company for the youth tennis program is not the way to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Okay, next we have Manny Fabian.
Good evening. I'm gonna read as quickly as possible to stay under the two minutes. Honorable Mayor Mitchell and City Council Members, as previously informed, it is with bittersweet emotions that I inform you of my plans to retire. I would like to thank you for your trust bestowed upon me and by previous administrations. I hope that I have lived up to the community's expectations. Since two thousand and eight, we have seen hundreds of kids come through our program and learn the game of tennis. More importantly, my wife and I have been blessed with to be a part of their lives. We hope we have helped them make make them better human beings. The bonds with these kids and with the broader racket sports community are what we will miss the most. I'd like to recognize and thank Omar Luna, Lautaro Garabao, and their staff for making my job easier. Their responsiveness and professionalism is what public servants are and what makes private public partnerships succeed. When the city renewed match points contract in two thousand and twenty-one, I was asked by the city council to ensure that when I retired, I'd find someone to continue the community-based programming and the residents were accustomed to. Rather than turn my keys in at the end of the month and sail into the sunset, I took that request very seriously. I looked for someone like-minded, strong sense of family and community, a passion for tennis and tennis expertise. I was fortunate to meet Brad Mixon and his wife at a USPTA conference a few years ago. His tennis background and experience far exceeded what I had back in two thousand and eight when you guys took a chance on me. He also has extensive pickleball knowledge. After personally vetting him, I brought him on on a trial basis in twenty-two. His work ethic and passion proved to be unparalleled. Parents and kids alike embraced him as he fell in love with the community and his residents. I made him a partner in January twenty-three, and he has managed day-to-day operations since then with me looking over his shoulder. He has done a commendable job, especially when navigating the challenges of bringing pickleball to the community. He demonstrated a willingness to listen, make changes, and ensure a dynamic racket sports community. As you know, consensus is the tricky thing to find. Brad has handled it with professionalism. I am confident that he will improve on what we built along with Sylvia and Tomas, who've been with me for years. I guess I'm done.
There you go.
If you're
You should email that, email that to us, Manny.
Okay.
Thank you, Manny.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Tom Webb. And for those that don't know, Tom Webb is a former council member. He's very familiar with this.
Born in ninety-eight. I think I got off the council forty-five years ago. I have shoes older than they are. I still wear them, yes. Anyway, you know why I'm here. I sent you guys a letter. I appreciate your time. What was that? Time's up. We'd like Roland and I have been talking about this when Doug wore passed away. We'd like to take the the um Prince Field and have the Prince Field at Douglas Orr Park. He was on the rec board for years. I don't know how many years, twenty years maybe. A lot of the kids in town that have nice houses and whatnot went to work for him. If not, they probably would have headed to jail. I mean, he's done so much for this community. He, on his own money, his own time, irrigated the um Peavy Field, also East Drive Park, which Stafford Park. Also, the playground that's at Prince Field and the golf course. He did those bathrooms on the golf course, his own money, his own time. Speaking of which, the golf course probably wouldn't have it. The ones for him, John Cavalier and a group of us that got together, said, what are we gonna do? City of Miami was selling it to the school board. Can you imagine four or five more schools there? And he was instrumental in helping stop that. And we have it today. It's probably our finest jewel we have. So I appreciate your time and please, I think that that's the least we can do for him.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Roland Rivero.
Yeah, so.
Well, we can't, you have Roland, you need to Also, the reason for speaking into the mic is that um the people at home can hear us and it's recorded as part of the the meeting, the official meeting. And Roland Rivero is our former Public Works Director for the city many years ago when we first moved to Miami Springs.
All these mayors and I were first started wave before Bob Hurt. And I'm throw down, I said, he thinks he's old. Now you figure how old I am.
I think that's one of the nice things about Miami Springs. There's always a connection of, you know, whoever's here has so much history.
And the same as I had with Doug Orr, we both did the school together. And when I thought of the idea, Paul, Tom, and some other, your mayor and most of you, is that when I go to the University of Miami, when I go to the University of Miami, they have Mark Light Stadium at Alex Rodriguez Park. And the only reason they did that is because Alex gave a lot of money. Now, I coached Alex way back when he was at Westminster. So I thought of that and I brought it up to the mayor and some of you, and we're hoping that we can get this done. And naming it, you know, Prince Field at Douglas Orr Park. And I thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Trina Aguilera.
Hello, I'm Trina Aguilera, and I am a parent of a a young man that he's now thirteen. He's been attending the Matchpoint Academy tennis program since he was about five and has really uh helped him in his his personal journey of, you know, learning how to make friends and, you know, committing to something and putting his all into an activity. It's it's been, it's been such such gains that you can't even imagine that the growth that I've seen in my childhood, partly because of of Manny and now because of Brad Mixon. And I understand that the name change has occurred. It's now gonna be Miami Tennis Pro instead of Matchpoint Academy. I actually watched the entire review uh board meeting earlier today. So I noticed that the name had changed, so I want to be in favor. Please uh consider, I know he's he's ranked number two, but please consider bumping him up to number one and going ahead with the Miami Tennis Pro Company. Uh, you you won't be sorry.
Thank you, Trina. Okay, next we have Sean Bure.
All right, I got a lot to say. I'm gonna make it quick, so. I talk fast, I apologize. Okay, hi, my name is Shambur and I'm back again to speak in support of Brad and the Pro Tennis Company. So I'm here today because I saw that the committee is recommending another company, and I'm here to try to prevent you guys from making a big, big mistake. First, let's talk about the money. Apparently, the other company's proposal is to do the thirty-seventy split. I don't know about you guys, but to give up thirty percent of something you're putting your heart and soul into sounds like a lot, in my opinion. I'm sure they only proposed that because that's what you guys recommended on your uh uh RFP, so they could get their foot in the door. Brad's Miami Pro Tennis is a little lower, but at least he's honest and fair. The best advice I was given when I started my business was to do just that, be honest and fair, and that's what you're getting with Brad. No surprises, he cares. Uh, the pro shop, the other company mentions they're going to build a new pro shop out of their own pocket. That doesn't make much sense either. Who would build a new building if it's not theirs? If I were them, I would buy land, build a pro shop, and pour a concrete slab, bam bam, got tennis courts. And and you're making a hundred percent. Um, but that's just me. Um, I mean, we really need a new, do we really need a new pro shop anyway? How much revenue is really generated from a pro shop? Most stuff's bought online anyway, and mostly what they sell are snacks and drinks. Um, if they're really serious, I would recommend have them putting money in an escrow account just to see how serious they are about it, not to mention when they plan on doing all this work. Third, so the thirty percent split uh and the pro shop, don't you think they'll have to increase rates? Isn't it common sense? Not sure if you know, but on their website, if you have lessons, you have to pay their annual uh membership fees as well on top of the lessons. Not sure if you guys are aware of that or not. But anyway, that's it, and I wish I had some more time, but uh I'll let my daughter. And I will email you guys the rest of what I have to say.
Okay, and this is Kelsey Bure.
Matchpoint as well, she's just a little shy, but they're the girls that I fight for, so keep that in mind.
You signed up to speak.
You could do it.
My dad did, not me. This is my point of view. This is my point of view of why I think Brad and his team should stay. I would, I would like them to stay because I have been taking lessons at Matchpoint for more than five years. The coaches have improved my tennis game, and if you are, and if you have trouble with a skill that we're learning, the coaches will take their time and help you with that skill. I really do not want to see Brad, Sil- Sylvia, and and Tomas leave because they have been coaching me since I have joined Matchpoint. Has also made a substantial impact on myself and other tennis athletes and in in the community. And my sister had a tennis lesson today, and she had a smile on her face the whole time, and I don't want that to change. That's it.
Thank you.
John, she did better than you did.
Thank you. And Manny, um, as Walter, as Councilman Fihad suggested, please email it. I think you've emailed it to us before or not that, not this statement. Okay, so if you could email it to us so so we can see that, thank you. Okay, so that is it of everyone we have signed up to speak at open forum. Oh, okay, did you want to speak?
Yeah, but I I can't speak when they talk about.
Yes, if because you're on no, if you signed up for the agenda item, you've signed up on this one, would you rather speak right now, Mr. Lumpy? Okay, instead of speaking during, okay, if you sign up for the agenda item, then you can speak during then, but we're happy to hear you now.
We live in Miami Springs and we're proud of it. Carlos Lumpy, one eighty-one Hammond Drive, I'm here as well as Tom Webb to speak uh to this uh naming of Prince Field to Douglas Orr Park. I very much approve of this. I also approve of this movement of naming uh private sector Miami Miami springers, as we did with the naming the passing last October of the owner of Cozy Diamond. Uh, this is a good move, because I do not approve when we name uh structures or streets or anything by uh, let's say, the uh commissioner. Uh, I I when when you spend public money, all right, it's not out of your pocket. When you're not taking risk, when you're not a risk taker, it's a whole different world. than those of us who are private sector Miami Springers. Uh, I, I approve of this very much. I only found out hours ago about, uh, perhaps naming, uh, a Prince Field with Douglas Orr's name. And I will come more prepared for the second reading. Um, I'm meeting with Wayne Orr, um, next week. And I will have a very long list of what Douglas Orr has done here in Miami Springs. He was the first one to write a check out for so many pauses here in Miami Springs. He is a huge employer, a large property owner, or was, I'm sorry. Um, and, and the ownership of Douglas Orr has changed recently. But, uh, as a landlord, I have dealt with all the trades. And my favorite are plumbers. They really are. And, uh, it, it's understated what, uh, tradesmen do in our world. And I've always, and I'll close with this, um, there are no trash jobs. Our, our, our world is built by risk takers. And, uh, we must value labor from the barn shovel in a barn to the highest disciplines of a brain surgeon. All work is noble and good, thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
Okay. Rohelio, you're signed up to speak during the agenda item, right? Okay. All right, so that ends our public forum. Thank you to everyone who takes the time to, um, to come, sign up and speak to us. I know it's short, um, because we have to get on with the agenda, but, um, we're listening, we hear you, and, and it's greatly appreciated. Okay, um, we'll move to the consent, uh, approval of the council minutes for the February 26th meeting.
Motion to approve 6A.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Do you hear us? Councilman Vasquez? Do you hear us? If you want, raise your hand, yes.
You're muted, Victor.
Yes, is okay?
I think that is a yes.
Okay. This is a yes, this is a no. Thumbs up, okay.
Sorry, I was, I was having trouble unmuting, and I am unable to use my right hand. So I'm trying to make the mouse operate with my left hand. Good luck with that, anyway. Aye, yes.
And Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. We move to the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item, um, of these three consent agenda items that they want to pull to discuss? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at an older an older agenda.
Motion to approve 9A and B.
Any, uh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, we move to agenda item 12, other business, and we have 12A is a vote of confidence for the city clerk as required by, um, our city charter.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second? All right, any discussion? I would just like to say that, um, our city clerk is a very hard worker, very dependable, offers suggestions which are very useful, and is always available when I need her, so, um, she definitely has my vote of confidence.
Thank you.
And we're very appreciative to you and your staff.
Thank you.
You're here.
Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Aye.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to a vote of confidence for the city attorney as required by the city charter.
Motion to approve?
Second that 12B.
Discussion? Okay, then I will say to Heidi, um, and all of your staff at Wyserota, the firm, um, I know I reach out to you about all sorts of things constantly, um, and you and your staff are always available, provide a wealth of knowledge. Um, I really appreciate the depth and breadth, and I've said this before, of your firm. Whenever, um, I ask Heidi a question and it's not something that's within her best expertise, she always, uh, sets up an appointment with someone else, um, within her firm who specializes in that question so that we can discuss it, and, um, uh, that's really valued by me, um, so with that, um.
Let me say something.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know me, I like to say things the way I, uh, straight shooter about a lot of things, and I want to say the truth. Before I got to this council, so on the other side of the dais, sometimes I wasn't, uh, sometimes I was always a little bit critical of things, certain things, because I didn't see it as, you know, you don't get all the information, you think that, well, it doesn't seem like they're, she's fighting for the city on everything. Now that I am on this side, and at least in my tenure here, I could without hesitation, seeing that you are dedicated to our city and that, uh, we come first. And for that reason, I have a vote of confidence for you, you're going.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just got all the way now, so dragging the meeting towards the end. So, we've come a long way from last year to, to this year, because I think we all know where that went last year. Uh, we've taken a 360, uh, turn in the last year. And, um, at least for me and, and working with Heidi and Roger, we have, uh, taken a different route of communication and interaction and collaboration, which has now allowed me some positivity and more transparency, and I feel very, much more confident than where we were, and we're working a lot, on a lot of items together, and, um, we are doing, uh, one-on-one workshops based on city council consensus, which for me is 100% valuable for me to be able to go to your office, sit with you, literally one by one, work on items for a city. Um, I think it's, 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 it's so much more different, so I'm really looking forward to a fresh new start with you, and, uh, I know that we're going to do very good things for our city. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Then we'll call the vote, please.
I'd like to just chime in. Sorry, I don't want to be the one left out. I think, I think she knows how much I appreciate, uh, what she does, and I think that Wyserota serves us admirably and you're great, thank you.
Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. So we've moved to agenda item, uh, 12C, and, my glasses. Uh, we have Vice Mayor Bravo, who is going to speak about the public right-of-way parking regulations.
Okay, so, um, basically what I kind of touched, uh, on top and during the workshop, which wasn't the point of discussion, I'm going to make it very brief, because these are these, these are, this is something that I'm, we're going to have to get into more details with when we adjust the whole parking situation as a whole. But I have a really big concern, um, I know Councilman is bringing up overnight parking, uh, and those issues that affect directly retail and commercial areas for the most part. Uh, what I'm really looking at here is trying to see if we could get a more regulated, more uniformed approach to, um, our public right-of-way swale parking, because it's become really, really, um, messy. We have really cars everywhere, all over city property. Um, I don't mind, you know, if we can look at this and maybe work with the multifamily homeowners and see how we can work this out, but I don't think the city is in a position where we have this luxury to just have, you know, whether you're a resident or a visitor, just the parking all over all these multifamily areas is just becoming, um, uh, it's just, it's just messy. We have dirt, we have people, we, we don't even know who's living there, really. We have the over occupancy issues. Um, I remember a couple of years ago, I can remember, remember a couple multifamilies where, you know, they would park on the swale parking, but now to, to the, to the, it's like a full cap. There's like no break, no window. Um, I don't know where these multifamilies are supposed to park. I know a lot of these buildings don't have, uh, an actual private prop, uh, private parking on their property, because whether they're limited to space, or whether the, the building, the way it was built out at that time and it was approved. But I think we're living in a different, um, our population obviously has, has changed and has increased, and I think our little city is suffering from the overbearance of, of over, over occupancy, and now with, you know, the, the housing issue, um, I can understand where landlords, you know, maybe it's not the landlords, maybe they're, they're not overoccupying, maybe it's just tenants that are in a unit and they're having visitors over and they're partaking in rent. Again, I don't get into the private sector, what I'm just looking at it, I'm looking at it from the outside, and how many cars we have parked in, in various different multifamilies. And it's also safety concern, because sometimes I see cars there that have been there for days, weeks, and months, and I don't know if they live there. I don't know if they're visitors, so for all I know, it could be, uh, it could be a criminal, they could be the, I, I don't know. What I want to do is look at this, uh, look at this ordinance to see if there's a way that we can pave out a more structured parking, so, um, I don't know what step to take as far as, you know, if the city paves out, then we do assign parking and we talk to the landlords and say, hey, listen, based on your multifamily, your occupancy is, is, is such number, this is what we're going to offer you based on what you have, and then you could, go, you could go ahead and pay, um, whether it be a monthly or an annual parking permit to the city. But we need to start reinvesting back into our city, because we're just, as much as I would love to give everything away, I think it comes to a point in time economically where it just doesn't work. The logistics, financially, this is just, I don't think we're really being responsible. I am totally open to, to suggestions, I mean, this is not my forte, but I have done my homework, I've done, I've had plenty of pictures, um, just a cou- in the last couple of weeks, because I want to see if there's a trend, I want to see if it's me, or is it, is it the same cars, is it not the same cars? But I'm going by in the evenings, and I, I can, because I live here, so it's very easy for me to, to, to go around. Um, I know Canal Street, um, there's two big, uh, they look like dump trucks. They're not ours, they're private, and they're, they're just using Canal Street as private parking, as a personal parking spot. I know you're going to touch into the overnight parking, which is a Canal Street, so that's that, I think that will take care of that issue. But I don't know, we need to approach the multifamily housing, and I know Councilman Fahad brought this up back in October of 2022. Um, we didn't move forward, again, we were waiting for the parking study to come through, I wanted to see if the parking study touched a little bit on the housing. Um, but it didn't, because I didn't want to work twice, because maybe it did give some ideas or, or an approach to that. But we just can't have this whole, um, for example, Bella Bakery, you have the multifamilies there. Somebody wants to go, go to, to Bella Bakery and there's no parking, they'll go ahead and park on the other side. Okay, fine, that's the way that it is now, but I want to secure, it's like both, I want, I want the businesses to have a parking, and I also want the residents, at the end of the day, when they come home from work, they can rely on a parking space and whatnot, especially it's going to become an issue more in the downtown. But we have many multifamilies all around town that people don't even know, people only think about the ones in the, the high traffic areas, but we have ones on Flagler Street, like the crevices that you don't know, we have two-story apartment buildings. And if you go by, you have people parking around the perimeter under stop signs, which by code already you're not allowed to park on, under any traffic signage. Um, so we need to correct, I think, uh, something that's already become an issue. I know we have a lot of wonderful, very smart people here, I know Ernie Aloma is, works at the City Miami Beach, he's touched on the topic of, of transportation, and he may have some thoughts here today.
That's Rohelio. Rohelio.
Rohelio.
Yeah, Ernie.
Ernie.
He was, too.
Um, my apologies. So I was confused, I was definitely confused, but anyways. Going back to this, I think that we need to change, um, the standard that we have right now for multifamily housing, we, we need to, we need to fix it, because it's, it's not safe, it's not, uh, logistically, it's not feasible. If we do have, for whatever reason, let's say there's over occupancy right now, like I said, we can't get into the private sector, but if we do fix the city side, by default, that's going to transpire into the private sector, and people will be like, well, we can't do this anymore, because we don't have parking, now it's a sign, now you have to park, so it kind of self-corrects, it's, uh, self-corrects the issue. Um, I don't know if any of the residents here feel the same way, or the council members, I, I, I think that we see that, um, going along the whole city, and especially when this building is done. If we already have a shortage for retails, obviously, I, I mean, I will go to the next best option and park if there's a multifamily that has a little space here on the swale, I'm, I'm going to park there, I mean, that's, that's just the, what you're going to do. But I don't think that's fair either, uh, for, for the multifamilies that are there as well, so I'm trying to look for a more, um, reasonable approach here as far as parking, uh, landscaping, paving, and drainage. So I was just looking for some sort of consensus, see if I can.
Well, let me ask you this. And because I see two, and everything's overlapping.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're a small city and everything overlaps, but seems to me like the parking workshop that we had was to address parking in the commercial areas, which in some commercial areas includes residential parking, particularly because we're about to open a large building in the commercial area that's going to have a good deal of residential. So that's all being discussed, and I think that ties in with what Councilman Santin is bringing up, which was what we discussed at the, um, parking workshop about overnight parking. How do we handle overnight parking? And I brought this up in the past, you know, my concern is people are working from home, I think when the building was approved, we were saying, oh, people would be leaving and going to work, and, you know, and then they'll come back in the hours when the businesses are closing down. People are working from home, that means that, you know, two, two, three, four days, you may not need to move your car because you're working remote. So that whole situation has changed, so, but I have a question, I guess for Heidi or JC. My understanding is swale parking. Swale parking, anyone can park in swale parking, is that correct? And I don't, and I mean, grassy swale parking? That doesn't have a sign saying, we have few areas where it says, you know, no parking or?
That's correct, I don't believe there's any restrictions on, on swale.
On swale parking? Okay, so if someone has, if someone has a multifamily building, and for the most part, I guessing you're talking about smaller multifamily buildings that we have throughout of, we have a lot of even single-family studios that were built back when the airline industry was very big here, and they were housing, you know, the pilots and flight attendants and all that were headquartered here. Okay, that swale is, swale parking is, in essence, what is, what is it, Heidi? Public parking, it's not really public parking, but swale parking is
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way, and, and people can park there. And there's no differentiation whether I'm going to a business or I live there, the swale parking is by the nature of it being swale and not public parking, is that correct? I'm asking.
As long as that's what's in your, your code, yes. Because it's owned by the city, so if it's, it's your right-of-way, so I'm trying to pull up, unfortunately, the internet is not cooperating.
And then, and then.
It's, it's back now, so you want to try to, try it again.
And then, public parking is paved parking, which we're designating as public parking, and that's part of with the public, with the workshop, what we're talking about, what hours should it be? Should it be, you know, restricted to two hours, or should it be, um, uh, just no overnight parking or in some areas? But we have to keep in mind that we have, this is, there are a lot of, um, established multifamily units throughout Miami Springs that have been here 30, 40, 50, 60 years. And, um, we have to be very careful about telling them all of a sudden, you know, we're changing the parking on you, these are residents of Miami Springs. And we need, you know what, this has to be thought out in a way that, um, and it may be something that down the road, as new buildings come up, that we adjust them and that we require them to provide their own parking, and swale parking is not allowed, so there's a whole bunch of things here that we need to look at.
That is what I was going to bring up, so I want to thank the Vice Mayor for, for bringing this up, because I think it's thought provoking and it gets us talking. Um, it, so my understanding is that the swale is, the swale belongs to the city but must be maintained by the property owner, and the property owner has the right to call the police if somebody's parked in the swale that you do not give permission to be there, that's my understanding, that's how we've always. That is how I, that's how it's always been. I work at a school where neighbors complain that people park in their swales, and, uh, the, the, this is something that I've, I've, I've dealt with. I, I, I go out of my way to make sure that people don't park in the swales of, of the residents. So, that's my understanding. Um, whether or not, I think that, that the Vice Mayor brings up some things, if, if there's something happening in terms of how people are parking that goes against our code, I think that that is something that, that should be addressed through code enforcement. Uh, but what she does bring up, that kind of dovetails to what I said. Uh, but what she does bring up, that kinda dovetails to what I said during the parking study. Because uh this actually didn't come up with the parking study, other than I brought it up. It was part of the parking section, the second half of the Economic Development Board, which that wasn't included in our parking study workshop. But they did talk about this. Uh, and in October of twenty twenty two, we actually got consensus on something. But to bring it back to my point, one of the things that that in my mind, I felt like, if nothing else, that we got out of the study. Is that we realize now that going forward, developments should have their own, should provide enough parking, right? Ample parking, because now we have a better sense of how much parking there is and how limited it could be. And I think that going forward, we should probably keep that in mind and 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 I don't, I don't think that we're at the point now. Obviously, back in two thousand nineteen, we we wanted a developer to come in and roll the dice. And take a chance and and get a development project like that going. So we credited them twenty-six spaces that were abutting their storefronts. Along uh along Statnik Way and Canal Street. But I think now that we look at the parking study and we see that it is kinda limited. I think that in the future, we should keep that in mind when we're negotiating with developers to come in and kind of require that they have ample parking. Or at least enough. So having said that, uh, when I consider multifamily parking. I'm thinking about in the future. And the reason that I put it on the agenda back in October twenty-two, and by the way, we got consensus for it. We just never got around to it. Uh, so I I would suggest that we we go ahead and work on that now. On Park Street and Hibiscus, there was a property. It was zoned that for multifamily, but it was a single-family home on an irregular lot. And uh a local architect that lives here in the Springs purchased the property and he was putting a number of units on it. Uh, and uh they came to us uh for a variance on a side setback. But we got emails from some residents that said, oh, the parking there on 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 Hibiscus and Park Street. And we already have the apartment, all the people that park in in Grace Luther in Swale. And now they're gonna be putting all these units and this isn't enough parking. We actually discussed it only to find that like, well. We're not really here to discuss the parking. That's already been approved and what we're here is to say yea or nay on this setback uh variance. And the architect said you here and even told us, well, I'd be willing to put a little bit more parking because I think we only required one and a half per unit. He was like, I'd be willing because remember, you're going from single-family to multifamily because it was zoned for it, but it wasn't. He said, I'm willing to put more, but Chris didn't make me, Chris Hyde, former planner, didn't make me put more because it wasn't necessary based on our code. After that, I put it on the agenda. I spoke with the city attorney and I said, guys, in the future, we will, as we continue to grow. And encourage development, there will be more areas where it is zoned for multifamily and and a develop, nothing is standing in the way. For future development of somebody to come in and put multifamily and and we just had that narrow, like one and a half parking spaces per unit. And just preliminarily, I asked our city attorney, hey, what are other municipalities doing? And I think if I remember correctly, she said that municipalities, there are some that have, you know, a dozen different parking standards. Based on what it is that is gonna be there, whether it's a duplex or an apartment or this and that. And we have kind of a one-size-fits-all. And whenever we're doing something very narrowly compared to all the other municipalities. It makes you think we should kinda look at that. So my suggestion, and again, I appreciate that the Vice Mayor brought this up. For future development, right? And I know that that we're we're talking about, you know, working now and that to me, that's code enforcement. But for future development, we've got one standard for parking and it's a one-size-fits-all. And it seems to me that other municipalities have a much, a broader spectrum of what the required parking is based on what's actually gonna be there. I would like consensus again because we did get it back in October twenty twenty-two to have the city attorneys bring to us like, hey. This is what other municipalities are doing because we gotta look ahead, just like we're thinking of parking, you know, in the parking study. For new development, further development that's coming down the road, now is the time. Because you can't, like you said, Mayor, you can't change the parking on people once they've, they're already here. They kinda get grandfathered in unless they're violating the code in which we, in which we can enforce it. But I have a feeling that there's gonna be more development as as this community continues to grow. And developers are gonna wanna get in on it and turn a single family into, you know, six units. And the next thing you know, those six units only have, you know, like nine parking spaces. And and then we we think to ourselves, wow, that's grossly inadequate. We could do something about it now. I don't know what it is. We should look at what other municipalities are doing, but I think that that would be a good thing to look at to kinda save us trouble down the line.
To the chair. The parking study that we had only targeted um certain areas, which were all. Businesses, Advents' Property, Berry's Cleaner, Springs Town Center, um. Some businesses, the the building in Hope Square. This didn't talk about anything residential, other than the town, the town center building. And the businesses. This has nothing to do with what we're talking about now. And while I understand that we like to use, I appreciate it because I, it's it's a nice way to say, you know, grandfathered in. But there has, when the city needs to do a change because it's responsible to do it. We have to find out ways and remedies to incorporate that, where we can strike a balance between the needs of these multifamilies. Um, and the city's needs as well, because right now it's just aesthetically, it's unap- uh unappeasing. It's, it looks dirty. I mean, if we really wanted to and take the easier approach, go ahead and put uh do not parking signs on all the swales. Let the grass go back, but where are the people gonna park? We, I mean, we don't have, you know what I mean? We don't have that luxury. So we have to strike a balance where we're trying to create different funds, whether it be a tree trust fund, a parking fund. Uh, this would be lining up with the parking fund so that we can reinvest into into whatever parking we we wanna do.
But let me, I I'm um.
Maybe I should provide pictures, I think.
No, I I think we're all well aware of, you know, the parking. Funding is what I am confused, just one second, um, Councilman, and then I'll let you, Councilman Vasquez wants to say something. I'm confused as to, um, can you tell us what you mean about the funding? Because right now, let's take a real situation. It's easier if we take a real situation. You brought up um the Bella Bakery. Across from the Bella Bakery on the other side, we have several single uh multifamily units, some single-story, some. Uh doubled story that have been there a long, long time and they use the swale. And that is their parking for the swale. So let's use that as an example because I think we can all visualize that. I'm not trying to pinpoint anyone, it's just for the ease of, and it's not a particularly large, but it is multifamily. So what do you envision? Are you, do you, are you proposing that we?
I'm proposing.
Charge fun of parking for them?
I'm proposing to look at this a little bit further to see what options, like how Councilman Fajad just said. What options we have to structureize the parking on public right away. So whether it be shared. Uh, no overnight parking, maybe there's a a time slot for 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 residents. I really don't know. But what what I'm trying to get at is where I would like to see structured paved parking. And I don't know if it gets to the point of uh where people, the multifamilies where they live to, they're parking there now. Whether it be a paid system for for that parking spot for them. Um, I don't know, Heidi, if you wanna chime in with some ideas that you may know out there.
So as I'm, as I'm hearing all of the discussion from tonight and prior meetings, I've been jotting down some notes. And I think we're in like three different categories and it sort of overlaps with Councilman Santin's agenda item. So one of the things that you guys are, the council is discussing are your actual zoning requirements. Whether it be for a single-family property, a commercial property, multifamily, et cetera. So think of all of the different uses that you might have in a city and what are the parking requirements for that? I think that's something that your planning staff and your, in their review of the code can provide you with recommendations. Based on their knowledge of the city and the city's desires to either change it or or not. Um, or further um sort of specify some of the uses to, your point, uh, Councilman Fajad.
Uh, so that's, let's agree that I think we've got a consensus and in the past, we've done this. That we're, when we're talking about new building, um, in new building, we all agree. Just consensus that we need to look at, not just accept, well, they can park on the swale, that those are opportunities to. Make sure that there's adequate. So let's talk about existing. Multi-store, multi, because that's mainly what we have. We have a lot of existing um multifamily housing.
So what I, where I'm going with is future housing and and what your, how your zoning code can treat future housing, future uses. Um, with your existing uses, um, and and dealing with, for example, the multifamily properties. That maybe don't have enough onsite parking and need to, or are utilizing the swale adjacent to them or they're using paved parking. Those are sort of two categories that I've set forth separately. Um, and I think with a paved parking, it goes to your overall discussion of, are you going to charge for parking? Are you not? Are you gonna pr- set forth um time limits? Are you going to do no overnight parking? And I think, I know the manager has remarks on that, but that's like a separate category. So your zoning code for future properties, your uh plan for how you're going to use. Uh, existing city spaces, like we talked about at the workshop. And then the third is your swale parking regulations, which I believe, there's. There's a few different places in the code where it talks about your parkways and and where you can park and where you can't park. So it's it's sort of sprinkled throughout the code. Um. So I think that's an area that we need to look at the code and see, do we still want these laws? Do we need to change them? Do we need to, is it a matter of amending the laws? Or is it a matter of enforcing what you already have? Um, so I see those as like the three categories sort of to, to um provide some structure to the conversation. Zoning code, uh, use of existing paved parking, whether it's the city's parking lots. Or the uh just parking on your right of way. Adjacent to different properties and then enforcement or amendment of your swale parking regulations. That's how I think I can best sum up what the council is discussing.
All right, let's let uh Councilman Vasquez, you wanted to talk.
Thank you, Mayor. First, it was a point of clarification, uh, two things, a point of clarification. When uh when Councilman Fajad began talking, he said something about um being able to call the police. Um, because people are parking on sw- I mean, I can understand the problem around the school. There's no question about it, Walter, and other places. At a certain times during the day, people are gonna park wherever they, wherever they park. I I I wasn't sure that we could even do that. But be that as it may, on the um, my property on De Leon and South Royal, on the north. Part of the, on the southern part of South Royal, uh, we have about five parking spaces there on that swale that are used. On and off, sometimes by me and other people or or my neighbors and uh and 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 most of the time, it's not full. Most of the time, it's just empty. Um, clearly, that's a place where people park when we have activities on the circle. All of South Royal, Poconci, and up and down both sides of the street, uh, people park there. Uh, so I'm 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 in support of a councilman's recommendation and with the clarifications made by the attorney. That we need to look at these, I would say, I think she called it three buckets or three uh areas of of, you know. But uh but I know that the councilman's uh primary uh recommendation was future parking as well. So I think we need to to look at both um and and or three and um and begin the process of of reviewing this. Because more people are gonna be moving to uh to the city. Uh, across the street from me, uh, just before you get to the light to make the right to leave the city. And that uh, that uh business area with sandwich shop and all that is, just behind it is an apartment building. And I see a lot of people from that apartment building parking on the swale. Right next to the, to the uh, to the uh, the adjacent to the building. I've never heard any problems. I've never heard people arguing out there, but but it is a, it is a reflection that uh that uh that building. That structure doesn't have enough parking for residents and and or people visiting. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
You know, would just like, and Heidi, when you look into this further, um. Wondering with a swale, say, my own house, I have the swale in front of my house. I can park cars in in my swale. If someone owns a multifamily unit, it seems to me like they should have the same right to park. Their cars in front of their swale that I have to park in front of my swale. I can't imagine that we can tell them, you know, no, the swale is because you have several, you know, you have six units on the street. Um, the swale doesn't belong to you, so that's right of way. I don't know. I'm just wondering. I don't see how we can enforce one thing and the other. Um, obviously, in a commercial area, that's, you know, uh, I would think that that's different. But when we're talking about residential, um, I'd be curious to see how uh how that applies, what difference would be. And particularly for the kinds of multifamily units that we have throughout Miami Springs, which is, I think, what we're discussing. So the other thing is, I believe, and I don't know this, it it's my understanding. Say, years ago, uh, before I was even on the council, the city passed something saying that only the owners. Of the property can park on the swale in front of their house because there was some problem going on between two residents. And you know, somebody was always parking there and they passed that. It was my understanding that that was not really enforceable legally. Because it's the right of way and swales are right of way. And again, I I don't know. So that's probably something we need to look at. There is likely something in our books that says you can only park on uh the swale in front of your house.
I I'm, I don't know if that language exists. I'm I'm not sure. Maybe it does. But the the issue when it comes to multifamily, I mean, it's easy to, I guess, identify who, who's like in your house, for example, your example. You you, it's easy to recognize, yeah, that that car, there's nobody in my house that that owns that car. It's not supposed to be here. And multifamily becomes more difficult. Now, we're talking about, in a little bit, we'll talk about the the parking in this, in the business district district. And I, in my mind, I think about those, that multifamily pocket that doesn't have any parking inside the ones along Canal Street, right, by Crackers. Or the building that was Crackers. They park on the swale. Now, when we start enforcing two-hour parking elsewhere and people are like, oh, you know what, let me just park right here. There's an open spot here on the swale. Let me throw it in there. There's no sign there that said they can't park there. It'd be very difficult for the police to 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 enforce that. So I I think in in what I've seen in areas like in the northern part of Miami Beach, um, where they have older buildings that have. Basically, parking, they've created resident parking zones and then they'll they'll color them depending on the zone. So it'll be like, if you live in this area, it's the green zone, you can park here in in the swale.
Like a permit system where you know, permit, a little decal on your car that.
So that, I'm not saying that that's something we need to do immediately, but that's food for thought because. That problem, uh, it when if people will find an open parking spot to park if if we become, or if we're fortunate enough to become. A booming, you know, center with a lot of restaurants and that people come out and and visit us. Um, that may be an issue down the road. So that's something to consider because it's really difficult to enforce. And you can park wherever, really, if you don't have a sign, a a sign up there.
Um, Mayor, can I just, I am, I'm clear and we're all clear on what the direction is. Um, and I think this goes to, I'm sort of grouping them together, Councilman Santeen, with your permission. But I think just to head, address both items head on. So the first will be, and and this is really working with the manager and and the planning staff. Uh, looking at your zoning requirements for parking in general and if there's any recommendations on that. And that would be to address uh future parking. And this is, uh, Councilman Fahad, this was your sort of item. Then the second thing that we'll be looking at is uh. With the manager, really, um, the use of the city's parking areas, whether those be the lots that we've talked about. Behind like the Starbucks or et cetera. I don't know that there's necessarily a a legislative cha- um, change from. Our end and drafting an ordinance. I think it's more, um, I'm just grouping the items that you've discussed. So that the manager and I can figure out who's doing what. Um, so I know he has his recommendations. Uh, based on the parking study and what he's seen so far, so we'll address that. Um, and that goes to uh Councilman Santeen's uh issues on what he's raising. On the overnight parking and the two-hour parking in different areas of the city. And then the third thing we'll look at is uh Vice Mayor Bravo's inquiries about swale parking. And so um, I had forgotten that we do have a section in the code. It's in ninety-six dash oh seven. So it's outside of your zoning code, but it's a section that gives, unlike other cities, um, and I think in the county. It gives a preferential right to uh property owners to sort of decide who parks. On their s- their swale because it's not the private property owner's swale. The swale belongs to the city. Um, it's a public right of way. So by ordinance, the city many years ago determined that the private property owners would be able to say. So by ordinance, the city many years ago determined that the private property owners would be able to say. You can park here, you can't. I want the police to enforce this, et cetera. So that is in your code. And if that's something that the I can circulate it to you all, and if that's something that you wish to review and change, you can certainly do so. Um, in looking at this quickly. The code doesn't distinguish which property owners it's talking about. So it's not clear if that preferential right. Applies to only single family homes and and the the single family districts. Or if it's applicable to the multifamily, which goes to the Vice Mayor's point. Or if it even extends to um. Commercial areas. So. I think this is probably one of those areas where we, you know, we wanna look at what recommendations can we come back with.
Needs a cleanup.
It it definitely does because. And especially in the in the multifamily that I was mentioning on Canal. I highly doubt the property owner lives there. And so who's gonna call the police? A renter, one of the renters? They're not supposed to be here, but what if it's a neighbor that's that's parked there, that's allowed to be there and and it lends to conflict.
Right.
Um, so with something that we have to look into a little further. Look into a little further and 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 clarify because it could lend itself to to a problem.
Right. Uh. Mayor, if you don't mind, so I I agree. I think that that given that, I mean, I think. As a owner of a single family home. Uh, I understand that part of it, right? The preferential. Uh, you know, the the preference of the property owner to decide who can park there, but I can totally see where the conflict could arise in. In multifamily or commercial or something like that. Um, just the. The only thing that I am really pushing for, even though I agree with that, is for. Future development in multifamily because like. We know as we look at. You know, the current development that's coming up, you look at it, you look you look at what was approved and it was basically seventy spots. For fifty-one units that are two and three bedroom. And, you know, you kind of look at that and you think. Well, that seems kind of inadequate. If we lived in New York where you could jump on a subway, that'd be different, but we live in Miami. And that's what happened in this property on Park Street and Hibiscus. It was six units and it was nine spaces and just you kind of think to yourself. Our six, two and three bedroom unit is gonna have just nine spaces. It just seems inadequate. So I it's my understanding that. This isn't as easy as having the city attorney just show us what the other municipalities do. I believe that information has to be pulled and then given to the city planner and then they make recommendations for us. So for future to that, that's my hill that I'm gonna die on, right? Like for future development. I think uh that's important because we look at. In the outskirts and and it's a great point brought up by the Vice Mayor, the parking study only looked at the central business district, but there's. These little developments that come up in the outskirts, like like the Palmetto uh apartments that came up behind the gas station, little. Developers are gonna try to pick off little places like that. I could see things happening on Canal Street where it's gonna go up and then we just wanna make sure that whatever. The standard for how much parking you need to have, because like I said, I feel like going forward development. Should have enough parking, right? So we should look at what the standard is for how much you should have. So that we don't have to, because then it's too late. Once somebody's already like made the pitch, alright, we're building it and they're like, oh, that's.
Let me ask this. So is there something, and I agree with Councilman Fahad with, you know, it's two different things. One is moving forward. Let's make sure that. Um, that we have the opportunity to agree. With the parking that's that's allowable, not just, well, this is all that's required. So this is it, that. For new development, that's multifamily, that we have input because obviously in a city like ours, it's a very different situation. Say, one building that we're talking about, that there is relatively a lot of swale parking there and some other area where there's basically none, you know, maybe. Commercial and that could vary greatly, block to block in Miami Springs. So do we need to, is there something that we need to put in our. Process right now to make sure, because in the past, in the particular. Building that you're talking about that was already approved, you know, that was what was required, that going forward. Um. It's not just, and I'm not sure how how that, I'll leave it up to you. It's not just, oh, well, all you need is one and a half. If it's a new multifamily that we have the opportunity as a council to discuss it. Considering where it is, and that's going to be a major, I think, in influence for all of us. If, you know, if it's an area where there's plenty of swale, it shouldn't be a problem, might be fine. In another area, we may say the same exact. Uh. Plans for the building. Um, would be a concern and we want to include additional parking for them. Um, so if that's something that we need to put in our process, let's do that because I think I'm hearing consensus from all of us.
Section ninety-six oh seven gives preferential right to single family homeowners. Um, to utilize their 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 sway or areas. It says. The property owner may enforce its preferential rights to the usage of such swale areas. Other parties, et cetera. So that only applies to single family.
I think, but I think that that.
Multifamilies don't have that right.
Okay, but I think that that. Later on, and I don't know. That that was challenged and uh we really. You know. Can't do that, give it to a sign. It's right away. It's public right of way and. The the homeowner does not have the ability, even though we have it in our code and we can ask our police. So, no, but I'm saying even that. So probably we need to find out if that's the case or not. I don't know, but I believe that's what I heard after that went into place.
So Mayor, to to the first question. It would be a zoning code change. So your zoning code currently says a single family home is required to have X. Uh, amount of parking. A multifamily unit is required to have Y. So it's set forth. So when it come, when a when a property. When a development comes in for approval. Whether it's a as a right approval or that it requires a public hearing before the city council. The planning staff looks at that. And they'll they'll look at what's being proposed. They'll look at the number of units, the square footage. They'll see. They'll they'll go through their whole checklist of all of the zoning code requirements and among them is the parking. So that's why I keep saying that, you know, we'll work with the planning staff. And so the extended ordinance changes needed, we'll do so. So that it's implemented. Um, and if there's a concern. That there is um some imminent development that we're, you know. We're we're not aware of or, you know, we want the community to know that this is something that we're looking at. We can. I can consider doing something what's called a zoning in progress. And basically it gives the city an opportunity to review something and put a pause. And apply different type of of regulations. So. Um, we can do all of that. But again, that part is updating your zoning code to the extent an update is needed. You may be surprised to find that. Um. Your parking requirements may be more strenuous than other cities. And I know, uh, you know, we 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 have some experts in the room. Who would tell you some places, um, some cities in the county have done away completely with parking requirements. And and so there's there's no parking required and it's it it sort of leaves it to. The developers to determine are whether or not. They're going to provide for parking on their own site and how they're going to achieve that. You know, I think part of the discussion that we had during the parking workshop, I forget who may have brought it up. But, you know. Uh, do you have the ability to rent a multifamily uh building if you're not providing parking? And so you leave that to the private uh landowners to to the folks. As as the gentleman was mentioning, you know, the the private, the private sector to make those decisions. Or you can continue with what you have and update it further, refine it. So I think. Um, I am by no means an expert on parking. Um, I I know how to write code. But that's something that really the the planning staff and unfortunately, they're not able to be with us this evening. But they will certainly have recommendations on on what to do.
Okay, and I think one other thing to mention is what the Vice Mayor read, the statute that that. From what we put in place a while back, that the single family. Property owner can say, I only want my swale used for this, but that even with that in place, that. Does nothing to a multifamily unit not being able to use a swale. All it's all it's saying is that the multifamily unit, if that, I'm just going on the face value of what you read out. Cannot say, you can't park here, you know, from across the street. But that right of way is still for anyone in that area to use. To, right, so it's still available. It's right of way. It's not something that they shouldn't be parking there. It's it's right of way and anyone can park there. Okay, so Councilman, did you?
We right, we hired the the company.
Yes, and all this is.
They're gonna come back to us unless one of us specifically knows of an area. That is different. Then that's different, so we can hurry them up with putting something in place. But in in general, we're gonna get it from them because every section that we're talking about. Will be different.
And I think two things. No, go ahead.
To that point. I think um it may be part of a natural discussion when we when we talk about the gateway overlay again. It'll be a natural discussion on the Abraham tract and Thirty-Sixth Street rezoning. So, you know, you're already looking at those three parts of your city. Then separately, I know this was Councilman Fahad's point. What do you do when you have a multifamily project like the one that came before the council that is proposing five units? On a. What we would.
A single family.
What we think of as a single family home lot, but it it wasn't quite that. It was it was.
It was zoned for multifamily.
Right. So those are the sorts of questions that working with with the planning staff will be able to.
And better determine. Something to keep in mind too is we're talking at least about two things and probably a whole bunch of others, but one is parking availability of parking. But in in addition to availability of parking, and it's a point that Vice Mayor Bravo is bringing up. Is attractiveness of parking. It's not just that it's available, but that where we're allowing parking and and that it's. It's attractive. It's safe and, you know, and and not just, you know, kind of shoddy of, you know, oh, you can park anywhere along there the street. So it's, you know, it's. Doing something that meets both things because ultimately anything we do should be looking at, you know, making Miami Springs the quality of life. Uh, better here and part of that is, you know, aesthetics is making it attractive that everywhere we we, you know, I always say, we say. Beautiful Miami Springs and there's some areas that aren't that beautiful that we gotta work on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so JC, you were gonna say something?
Uh, no, I just, I think the the council's direction is pretty clear. We'll. We'll look at, you know, we'll we'll talk and we'll look at all the the issues that we discussed and in particular, the. What Councilman Fahad brought up as far as the parking restrictions, in particular with the multifamily moving forward. Review it, see if it's. You know, if it needs to be adjusted.
Okay, so let's move on. If you guys are okay, we'll move to the next one, which is all related anyway. Um, Councilman Santin's item, and I think Rohe Leo, you wanted to speak on this item? So let me let you go ahead and speak first. He signed up to speak on this agenda item.
So I um. And I thought I had put the other one to eat. Um, anyway, so Roger Madan, two twenty-four Laney Drive. Mayor Chet Fields was my middle school basketball coach, uh, been here my whole life. Um, since everybody was talking about how. Their time here. Okay, so I I'm I believe that there is.
But let, give us a little background too, because in addition to being resident of Miami Springs, you have, which I always say, we need to tap into the professional expertise of our residents.
So I'm I'm the Development and Resilience Officer for the City of Miami Beach Plan Department. I have a master's degree in urban planning. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Um, so studying cities is what I do, and I'm on the planning board and board adjustment. Um, so, um. For for this ordinance, I believe there is parking in Miami Springs. I've never had an issue finding a spot. I believe our parking is poorly managed. We may not find a spot right in front of where you go. Today, for the first time in my life, I couldn't park right in front of City Hall. I did have to park across the street and I did have to walk. Um, a block. So I think. There is sufficient parking in this area. I think it's poorly managed and I think it's, as you just said, it's unattractive. Um, Friday, I ate at Sayamos. Uh, we parked behind and the lot here behind uh uh where the, next to where the police parked. There's a public lot there and it's very dark. Does not feel safe. I was with my family, so I didn't, you know, I had no big issue there, but but for somebody who's who's alone, it's it does not feel safe. And the same goes for the other parking lot that's behind Starbucks. The same goes for the parking on Canal Street. It's just poorly managed. In terms of overnight parking. Um, one of the things when the when the development um at Hook Square uh came before the council, one of my recommendations was that we do prohibit overnight parking. To make sure that those residents use the parking in the building and not the parking that's around it. It's intended for the retail. Um, I think for the retail, I think they can they can manage that. Um, in terms of having signage for for two hour parking, I think that's very important. For these businesses, important to make the most convenient parking for those for those customers that are coming in for quick. In and out type purchases. If you're going to Starbucks, you have the ability to go in and out and get your coffee and go. You have parking available for employees. It's a little bit further away so that they have to park. They have the more inconvenient spots. Um, and and so it's important for us to manage the parking appropriately so that the parking gets used efficiently. Um, there there is parking, it's just not being used efficiently. Somebody who who might work there might park in front of the in the most convenient spot for them. Um, and then a resident that wants to come buy something says, oh, there's no parking here. Well, why didn't that employee park? Along the canal. Or 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 behind the building, that part that that employee should have parked somewhere else. And so the the parking just needs to be managed a lot better. And that can be done with signage. Maybe fifteen minute parking in front of Starbucks, maybe two hour parking in front of uh. Um, in front of the Sevilla by Divino and in front of the dentist office. Um, and then you allow longer term parking along Canal Street. Um, where where uh employees can park and perhaps residents. Um, and it's not a good, it's a good idea to explore potentially having um um residential parking permits. Miami, the city of Miami uses it. The city of Miami Beach uses it and it works very well to make sure that the residents have that need it, have the priority. Um, however, personally, I would only issue those spots to people who live in existing non-conforming buildings. Um, if you're in a new building, you probably shouldn't qualify for one of those spots. Um, because they they do have parking. Um, and so. Uh, just touching on the previous issue, you're gonna find that uh cities are reducing their parking requirements. It costs fifty thousand dollars a space. And if you add that to the cost of a unit, it makes the unit unaffordable for people. And the state is actually mandating through the Live Local Act that cities um consider parking reductions when 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 workforce housing projects are being developed as part of the Live Local Act. Um. And so that's that's generally what you're gonna find. But that being said, cities also have a sliding scale for parking requirements. So smaller units have a smaller parking requirement. Than a larger unit. And I don't think Miami Springs does that. And that's something that Miami Springs may want to consider. If you're if you're building a thousand square foot unit. It makes sense to require at least two spaces for that unit, but if you have a smaller one bedroom unit. One and a half is probably gonna be sufficient. And then another thing is if you make it too easy for people to park, people will park. If you build it, they will come. Uh, and one of the goals with urban planning is to reduce traffic, encourage people to walk, encourage people to find another way to get around. Um, and Miami Springs is a great walkable community. A lot of people might be able to live here without having a car, but they have one anyways. Um, and if we make it too easy for them, you're they're just gonna have as many cars as they can. Um, so so you gotta think about the issue with supply and demand. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rohe Leo.
Okay, so Councilman, um, I'm gonna let you and um. While before you get started, as I've told you, I have to leave. I have to catch a flight tonight at ten thirty, so I am leaving. I will still. I'm going to pass the gavel on to our Vice Mayor. And I will still be participating, but uh. I'll be joining Councilman Vasquez. Doing it remotely. Alright, thank you.
Safe flight. The reason I bring this item for discussion is uh not to ultimately. Come up with a parking solution today. But obviously, uh, look at some of the options that talked about in the parking study. And the goal is just try to get a consensus on the first phase. That's one of the things that I liked about the parking study that. They were they were realistic to say that we got a lot of things that we could do, just like Rohe Leo was mentioning today. To start the first phase of this. But the reality is that we have to tackle it sooner than later. Because our reality is just around the corner. Which is obviously fifty-one units. That are gonna be occupied. For before the actual, you know, retail will, because that'll take a little bit longer for build out. So. Further, without delaying this, I'm gonna just go over my plan. For the phase one. That I feel that it needs to be immediately uh considered. So first and most important is. Two hour parking. There's a lot of sections that are two hour right now. And yet the signs are not there. Or they're faded. Or not at all. So I believe that this, we're talking about the overlay district. And CB and the CBD, the central business districts district. I believe that in order to um. You know, curtail now the possibilities of people staying there overnight. For right now, later on, we can discuss overnight parking and restrictions on specific time. It's put two hour parking. All across the board. Everywhere, including the off-street parking. Now, the off-street parking, in my opinion. Is something that we need to maybe address for employee parking with a permit. Because the reality is, most people are gonna say, well, where are my employees gonna park? Well, what we don't want you to do is to park in front of your business. Let that for other people to come in and have a quicker turnover. So in my opinion, considering that one of the off-street parking areas are not really considered. Uh, or not used a lot. Obviously, we're gonna address that as we just talked. Obviously, we're gonna address that as we just talked about, phase one, lighting, you know, better signage to get there. Restriping Canal Street, part of phase one. Do things, take these little steps to accomplish what we ultimately want, which is easing of the traffic situation. I mean, sorry, the parking situation. But obviously, when you address the two hour time limit. I think we, the most important thing of all this is enforcement. If we don't do enforcement, this is just never gonna change the behavior. But it, and we should, and that means yes, we're gonna have to probably consider a license uh, uh, plate. Uh, recognition system where people go around and uh, the police, as you say, or one of the PSAs. And actually, uh, you know, track if people are there more than two hours. Now, like I said, because of the employee possibly always wanting to do that step, and now they can't. Let's consider these off-street parking areas. We're talking about not just behind Starbucks. We're talking behind the post office. We're talking about areas on Westwood Drive. There are off-street parking. They could have a parking permit from the city for employees. I'm not talking about charging. I don't wanna get that discussion now because I don't think we should. And there's some administrative fee, well, that's something that maybe we can consider, but in, in general, do not charge the employee parking permit. But give them the option to park there. At the same time, those areas should have be, have some flexibility with the two hour parking. In case it's not utilized and some patron of another business wants to go there and park, give the option. Maybe in the future, we could change that. It's only exclusive to employees. But the most important thing is to put this two hour parking, put it on all the, all the, I'm talking about not the uh, off-street. Parking, I mean, off-street parking lots. I'm talking about right in front of the businesses is the most important thing that we need to implement now. And then at the same time, just like Rohe Leo was just mentioning about the quick curbside pickup. We know we could do this right away too. We can put uh, fifteen minute or ten minute parking in front of Starbucks. In front of the town center, probably will need a couple. We're talking about a large restaurant that's gonna go there. Um, you know, in front of Sushi Saki or one side, on the other side on Westwood Drive. But these little things that we could do today, we don't need to go into this discussion and get an ordinance change. The two hour parking is already there. All we gotta do, and I, my opinion, if you do order new signs, put the ordinance on there. That kinda gives a little bit more of a, and, and people kinda respect it a little bit more. And then ultimately, I, I, you know, it's, it's, if the whole goal is to allow, to help these businesses succeed. Turnover is super, super important. And unfortunately, a lot of the employees are the ones that are parking in, 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 in front of their own establishments. So I'm not saying not to consider and helping them. Obviously, that's why we talk about off-street parking area, lots that we have right now. But my whole key is trying to help uh, these businesses be successful. So I, I recommend that we right off the bat do these things, right? Uh, restripe Canal Street, better lighting on their off-street and on-street parking areas. And the signage with two hour parking across the board. And implementation through, for a police department or uh, whether they have to hire, we have to hire a possible uh. Uh, assistant to help on this, but buy the equipment and enforce it. It's the only way people will listen. They should not be there for more than two hours. You know, maybe later on, we could move a certain section of Canal Street to the west side of it. And allow three hour parking there or longer a certain section, because if you do go to watch a football game at, at the Bar and Grill. Or you go with a large party to a dinner party, you know, two hours go by fast. Okay? So we can discuss three hours later. I'm, I'm more concerned about the immediate attention to our phase one. Which is what we have now, existing stuff that we have now. And maybe, you know, moving a little bit long more in reference to the two hour parking, but more importantly, back to again, I keep emphasizing on this. Is enforcement. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I, can we hear from the city manager?
Yes, Pika, you stole my thunder. Um, the um, after the, the parking study came out. After reviewing it, I, I was thinking to myself, what can we do right now? What can, what do we have control of and what can we do? And as Rohe Leo mentioned, one of the things that stood out to me was the condition of our available public spaces. Um, you have one side of Canal Street where one town center was built and looks beautiful, right? The, the parking area, it looks really good. And then the other side of Canal Street leaves a little be desired. There, the parking lot behind um, the Starbucks. I, I didn't even think, I didn't even, it occurred to me, the lot that's in between, sandwiched between the private lot and, and the, and the police lot. That lot and the, we have Westwood Drive. Which is not in terrible shape, but we may or may not wanna consider striving it. Then, then adding the, the parallel spots along Curtis Parkway where the, where the pavers were put in. I think we could increase the number of parking spaces out there, um, using that paver system. Um, at the next, I didn't have, I didn't put it on, an item on the agenda, because I'm still getting estimates, prices, so that you guys understand what I'm dealing with. But I wonder, I didn't just wanna do striping. I wanted to actually put new asphalt down. There's cer- certain areas that the asphalt is not in good shape, so doing the, the, what do they call that? The seal, the seal coat isn't really good, so I'd rather do it right. And then maybe even pour a continuous curb instead of those parking blocks. Um, but we can discuss that a, a little later on. I wanted to get a quote for that, wanted to get a quote for resurfacing this, the, the parking lot behind Starbucks. And doing the, the rest of the paver work on the, on Curtis Parkway. The second part of that is signage. The, the police cannot enforce parking if there are no signs. We're not letting people know. Um, so the idea would be, I mean, I hear they don't want overnight parking. Um, the idea would be establish your parking limit. What do you want? Two hours, three hours? It's up to the council. Now, Rohe Leo, that actually brought up a good point right now. We're gonna need spaces for the employees to park. We're gonna need that. So maybe dedicating a portion of Canal Street for that. Or maybe along the areas of Westward, and not even, I'm not even gonna say Westward. But the, the, the parking spot, the parking lot behind the Starbucks, maybe some of that could be dedicated to that. Um, I mean, we're a little bit limited as far as lots are concerned. Um, so then the council would have to decide that. And then the third part is enforcement. And then I, I have, I'm getting a proposal for what they call a, the mobile LPR that gets on the car. So we can begin enforcing, that'll be like the electronic, digital chalking, instead of getting down and chalking somebody's wheel. Or tire, and then coming back two hours later and saying, oh, it's still there. Um, that's done now electronically with this LPR. So I'll get that proposal as well, even though police now with utilizing the, the public services. Office or the Public Service, the PSA, uh, they're, they're enforcing obvious, obvious parking infractions. Parking on the wrong side, facing the wrong side or double parked. They're beginning to do that, that type of enforcement. And then, and then the, the good point which was mentioned by both of you is. The curbside pickup parking spot, ten minute, fifteen minute, and I think we need to provide one, maybe two spaces. Um, for that, and you, you see the example on the other side, and I think this was done during COVID in front of the Cozy Corner. They have a, they have a sign there that says, curbside pickup only, and it's big respect. Nobody's parking there. So it's, I think that should be done as well, especially on where, where sushi Siam, it's sushi Siam? Uh, Sushi Saki and, and the subway in that area there, there's a number of restaurants that could use that service. At the next meeting or at the one after that, depending on when I get the price, I'll bring that to you so we know what we're talking about. The good news is, I do have some ARPA funds that I can utilize towards this and, and get it done sooner than later.
I could add one thing. Uh, it's just two hour, you know, parking everywhere. Sundays, holidays, no enforcement, no need. There's gonna be a lot of businesses that are closed on a Sunday, you know, especially the ones that are not in the retail business, in my opinion.
Yes, and then, and then the other thing I was gonna say is, let's take care of what we can, right? And, and then let the, let the building open up and let's see, let's see what it looks like. Let's see the effect. Maybe the parking is gonna be worse. It's better. It's not that bad. We have to kinda let it play out. Uh, we don't wanna continue doing different things, doing different things until we really see what we're actually dealing with.
So Councilman, for the two hours, how do we do for the employees? I mean, I'm a little bit, I wanna get started right away.
They got the permit, if they have the permit from the city, we would issue them a permit. They obviously, we have to designate the areas that they can, you know, go to. Like I said, I think because of Starbucks is an area that, behind Starbucks is an area where a good portion of the businesses will be. There's also another portion that is gonna be behind the post office would be more convenient, but they also have a little bit of options. On Westwood Drive behind these buildings for public off-street parking too. They have the right. Give them a parking permit for an employee. And then they just go there first serve, first, first come. Obviously, there's a space taken for somebody that's doing the two hour. I, I think that's where we start gauging if it's worth to say exclusive only employees, maybe future residential permit. Um, you know, I'm saying for right now, we gotta address the employees.
I think the easier way to go through Councilman's idea is to maybe have, go through the actual employer. Sorry, is to go through the actual employer to, to provide these permits to the employee, because you have employees shuffling. They're either quitting or coming and going, so maybe give a set of permits to the actual employer and the. The employer could go out and disperse those permits as necessary and turn in those permits back at the end of the day, so maybe the next shift can perhaps use it.
Where would they park with that permit?
At the two hour, they put it.
But you don't, yeah, but you don't want, you don't want them parking in a two hour.
I don't want it to be parking in front of the businesses. That's my whole point. There is where you need turnover. That's where the business owner needs the most turnover. To be successful. I'm talking about all our off-street lots.
We, we don't, we have two of them off.
We have three, or we really have more, because we have the all of Westwood Drive.
Those aren't.
Businesses off there, those are ours.
Yeah, but that's not, with the off-street parking lots is what I'm.
No, that's a lot, but there's, there's spaces behind even Cozy Corner, even though some of them have taken them to be their business.
But those are private, right?
No, there's stuff that adjacent on the, on the alley, the building is different, but on the alley side.
No, but behind Cozy Corner, I don't think it's public.
That are on the building, but not the ones that are closer to the multifamily. So that's what I'm saying. We have to get an assessment, but there's a lot of stuff on Westwood Drive behind these businesses.
But they can park.
Where they have, that's technically public parking, that the multifamily residents have used it. That's fine. We'll have to tackle that part if we decide to do a residential permit. I'm just saying that for right now, the employee could have a little bit more options. And then we can gauge it from there. Is it, is it still necessary? These employees, we're having a shortage. Okay, then we gotta tackle it on another level, but I think we need to designate a certain area for them.
Let me, and I'm, and I apologize for this, because I, behind Cozy Corner, I, I wasn't aware that it was considered a municipal lot.
But there aren't, there aren't public spaces behind Cozy Corner.
That's, that's my point. I, I, the what, I'm sorry? Yeah.
Right, yes, right.
Those are spaces.
Those, the, there is public there, but not behind Cozy, not behind Cozy Corner and what used to be Bodies by Madi.
I'm sorry, yeah, but there is spaces, what I'm saying, some, behind some of these buildings.
So, can I, Chairman? It, uh, I think that trying to have a designated lot for employers, well. Here, why don't I start off by just throwing a real monkey wrench into things? So the twenty-eight spaces on the first floor of the building is gonna be the Wild West, right? Because we have no enforcement control over that floor. Uh, so basically, you know, it's first come, first served, whoever goes in there and that we have no. That's not our domain, and that's gonna be twenty-eight spots that they're gonna be killing for, and I'm sure residents are gonna be wanting to park there. And employees will try to sneak a spot. That's actually, the floor that has the most parking spaces is the four, first floor parking lot of that garage. In the, in the town center. But I think that trying to uh, give permits to employers is gonna be a lot. So here's the thing, right? The third rail of Miami Springs politics is saying that you're gonna charge for parking. Nobody wants to charge for parking. Right? We'll all get voted up, right? I get that. I get that. People need to understand that all of the plate reading technology that we're gonna buy and getting of, you know, hiring the people that are going to enforce this. That's all going to cost the city money, right? Uh, the, that's how, that's why so many municipalities do the pay for park. Because it, that brings you the revenue to allow to enforce the parking. So we're gonna be doing a lot of parking enforcement that at our own, on our own dime, and I think that trying to give. Uh, employers, uh, trying to give employers decals, I think is gonna be a lot. I think that we should decide. And I, I'm okay with allowing, I've had, we've had lots of conversations. I've had lots of conversations with. With the city manager and I, I'd be open to just having staff come to us with a recommendation, kind of a plan and let us kind of then cherry pick what we. Wanna change, what we do, we can, then we could have the argument, but I think we should allow them to just come up with something. But I think that we should decide, these are the areas where we want the two or three hour parking, right? Because there is gonna be a sports bar and all of the basketball games tend to last more than two hours and football games definitely last more than two hours. Um, but I think that we should decide, this is where we have the time restricted parking. And then just have some parking like at the end of Canal Street that is just open, and then that could be for anybody who is gonna stay longer or employees and they gotta. They go, but I, I completely agree with you, Councilman Santin, because I think that you hit the nail on the head. I'm not even thinking in terms of overnight parking. The vet is gonna open up. They're gonna have people that are gonna be there for eight hours, okay? The, and, and that sports bar is gonna open up, like I've said before on the dais, on a Saturday night, they're gonna have twenty employees in that sports bar. Those people are gonna be there six to eight hours, and if they're taking up those spaces that you want turnover, that's a disaster. So I think that we just need to protect the spots and we need to, and I'm okay with letting, you know, staff kinda come up with a recommendation. I think we should say, these are the spots that we definitely want the turnover and the rest of them, you know, the, it's open for first come, first serve. And have the employees figure out how to, you know, where they're gonna park. I mean, that happens in a lot of places. With employees that work at like stores and more like, they gotta find a place to, to park that isn't time restricted. My, I think that doing the decal is just gonna be more work for us, and I just wanna remind everybody that if we're not gonna be charging for parking. Which I don't think there's any appetite for that at this moment, uh, the more complicated we make this enforcement, the more it's gonna cost us in terms of like. The logistics of, you know, who's the new employer and how many decals you need, now you switched and that kinda thing. I think that that's gonna make it very difficult.
Well, also, I mean, I wouldn't give free parking. I mean, the business owner would have to pay for those permits for those, those respective employees. But I, I agree with you. I think that we should go through. Through the different process to figure this out, because I mean, if I had to work there and I had to go around in circles and around in circles and have to leave an hour early. It just, it, it becomes like, okay, do I wanna work here now? Everything, you know, it's just like commuting to work. Is it worth it? Everybody wastes out their time.
Let me, let me take a crack at it with staff. Um, and you bring up, you, you brought up a really good point right now. You don't wanna make it to the point where a business, a discouraged business owners or employees from, from those business owners to come to work. You don't, you don't wanna do that. There's a fine line. We have to, to balance there. Let me, let me take a crack at it, you know, and, and take a look at all the, the, the parking spaces that are. You know, maybe not in a lot, but behind and, and kinda take that inventory that way. Um, see if we can come up with a plan. I mean, when I worked at Publix, you know, as a bag boy when I was sixteen, first thing, first day of work, they're like, alright, don't park. Anywhere basically I can see you. You guys park at the ends all the way back there, so. And he, you know, there's certain, certain areas that we can, we can put some of the, you know, the employee and say, these are the designated, these designated areas for, for your employees. You know, on further along Canal or whatever, but I'm just thinking right now, we'll have to find those parking spaces.
We're just talking, but also we're talking about a good portion, actually, except for maybe uh, Midam supermarket. Maybe tourist, I mean, there's certain buildings obviously conforming, but the general buildings in our town are non-conforming. So you don't have that luxury to tell your employees, oh, you guys go, go to that little pocket area in the parking lot and this will be it. They're gonna do whatever they need to do, and they're gonna go to the, the closest thing to get them to walk the least amount to their place. So we kinda have to change that behavior. So that's my thing about making the emphasis on the two hour, no parking in front of any of these businesses at all.
I think, and if I may, um, Vice Mayor, is the key there to what Councilman Santin is saying. Is that we get the employers, the owners to buy into, we're making it more available parking for their customers. And so your employees are going to um, have a place to park. It's not gonna be as convenient because it's longer term parking, but what we're doing. It's not going to be as convenient because it's longer term parking, but what we're doing is, um, you know, making it. More attractive for your customers to, to visit your site.
Well, I guess, I, I, I'm kind of, look, I'm, it's hard to get all those to get a consensus. Uh, so, but my whole point was that this phase one needs to go. As fast as possible.
No, and, and I agree with you.
Consensus of saying, let's, let's put this plan to action today, not, you know. Four months from now, because we need, we're going to address this sooner and I'd rather have. Things in place where they know what they're dealing with versus everybody coming over to your office. Say, well, since when did you put this sign up?
So. No, you're absolutely right and, and I'll bring to you a plan as far as phase one, what we can control. And then I'm also going to have to, as far as the parking allocation plan, if you, and for lack of a better term. Um, discuss that as well. Um, I'll be back. Either the next meeting, uh, well, at the next meeting, I hope to bring the numbers for the, for the actual. Physical improvements that we can do.
Okay, Heidi, for, for the purpose of continuing on this item, do we want to make a motion for consensus or a motion to. Approve to move forward to the next step so we can start addressing.
There's consensus.
I think there's consensus on the three things that we mentioned before. I think it addresses.
Tells everything.
Your discussion item and the vice mayor, sorry, the councilman's item. Um, if you'd like to make it a motion, you can, but you don't need to.
I mean, there's nothing to motion on really. It's just to get to the next. What this does.
That's fine. This is what I want.
What it does, it's actually a step ahead because it allows you now, if you want it personally or any of us. To collaborate with our city attorney and zoning and staff so we could get there. So when we come back, you come back with your.
Good. I think the message was clear, so. I'm clear. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up. I, I, I had a couple of conversations with J C and he was already like I. Or he had already told me that they were, they're working on it, but I, it's good to. Kind of get consensus on it that we want. We don't want to wait on this. So thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? The, we already, my understanding is we already got approval to extend the paver parking in front of the Papa John's along Curtis Parkway. To, to get like six or seven more spots, right?
I believe the council already was okay with that. I think the price came back.
I think, because I think and, and mayor, maybe you, you can chime in. My understanding is it was like a county issue since it was there, like I think.
It's county land and the reason that, um, we can get it easily, that we got it easily approved is that. It's per, permeus, pervious. So there's no, um, underground drains or anything required for that paver. So. That's why we have that kind of paver. Um, parking and they had approved and Tammy's the one that knows the details on this, but we requested to extend it along. The whole, um, continue that block of Curtis Parkway, first block where Papa John's is. And also a little further, and also provide the same kind of parking on the other side of Curtis, the first block. To make it consistent. So, and it's only the first block of Curtis which. On both sides. Um, I believe we'll, we're going to have between thirty to fifty spots. Um, total, including what's already there when we complete that. And it was approved. By the county. Um, that now we had asked, the county paid for the first one. We got them to pay for that first section that we have in place. This is good, right here. Um, they are balking at paying for the second one, but, um. You know, I'm going to pursue it a little more and see if we can get them to pay for it.
And mayor, it's my understanding that we requested to extend the southbound one. Do we need to make a request to do the? Northbound Curtis Parkway on that first block also, because by the way, I think that. When the memorial is done, it's actually going to look nice with the pavers on either side and. Already getting, the grass is getting killed with all the farm, the farmer's market is great. But I think that putting those papers is just going to add more parking, but I believe mayor, we have to request that side, right? We haven't.
No, I believe, uh, we'll have to check with Tammy because she's the one, but I think when we requested to continue. What I had asked is to also allow us to do the other side. So I believe that, but again, we'll have to check with Tammy that it was one swoop. We continue, we asked them to. Continue, um, the Papa John's side and then also put it on the other side and that that's okay. Um, and, and talking about part, parking, uh, future parking, we need to make sure. Um, as much as possible when we provide future parking, create new parking. That we do make it so that it is, um, pervious parking. That doesn't add to our flooding problems, you know, and, and causes more need for more storm, stormwater control and all. The rainwater is just, um, flowing through to the underground aquifers. But Tammy is the one, Tammy Romero, we'll have to check with her, I, um, as to, I think both of them are already okay.
Any more discussion? Right, we're going to move on to twelve D.
Vice, Vice Mayor, point of order. Sorry, like the voice from beyond, um, that I, 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 we, we left two items that we didn't discuss. And I wasn't sure, we said we're going to take them up later. But there's a consent agenda, uh, resolution nine C. And then there was an other business, uh, tw- twelve C was a request. By Mayor Mitchell for the discussion about budget planning. Those were taken off. Thank you.
I took that one off because J C, um, I've spoken to him and he has a plan for, um. Our budget as he should, you know, he's a new city manager and every city manager has their own, um. Uh, idea of how the budget process should progress, so, um. There's no need to discuss it. He's going to be approaching each of us and letting us know. How he plans to conduct the budget process.
I appreciate that, mayor. I just wasn't sure because sometimes. When you're off, when you're, when you're off, you know, uh, 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 on Zoom like I am, sometimes you lose. Some of the discussions, so. I wanted to remind the Vice Mayor and if that's it, then that, that's, that's cool. We can go.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to twelve D.
A request by me to, uh, consider renaming Prince Field in honor of Douglas Orr. Um, Prince Field at Douglas Orr Park. I first want to recognize the Prince family because, you know, a lot of times when people. Give requests about somebody special to the community or pioneer. Well, rename this and rename that. So obviously the first thing is like, well, this person must have been someone. You know, that did, had an impact in our community. Why, and not they would have named, sure enough, the Prince. Family donated the land. Where Prince Field is now. So to me, that's a big deal, right? It's almost a city, city block. But at the same time, the suggestion that was brought up as an idea, they mentioned the Mark Light Stadium and, you know, Alex Rodriguez. Putting all this money. Um, you know, Douglas Orr, obviously aside from the pioneer and you heard Tom Webb. And you had Roland Rivera, longtime residence at Springs, so he was, as he. A board member in the rec for a long time. He is one that gave both time and money. That one's not an easy combination. People do give. Money and some people give time. But to do both at the same time. Eh, I would say he becomes one of those rare ones. Uh, so because of that, I thought it was something when they brought up the idea to me. You know what? I think he's deserving of it. I mean, my daughters played soccer through the whole system here in twenty years. And, you know, he's always been somebody that I've heard, you know, that was very, you know, instrumental in, in supporting. When there wasn't a lot of fundraising back then. Uh, and aside from all the things they mentioned in reference to high school dugouts. Uh, plumbing, irrigation, I mean, feel the field, I mean, it was extensive. So I think in my opinion. He deserves of that extra little recognition. And so I think that was a good idea. Obviously, uh, we'll hear out from the council, the rest of the council, so to call. Prince Field. At Douglas Orr Park.
Vice Mayor, if I may, I'm good, about to go through TSA pre-check, so, I mean TSA. So I may not be able to talk later, so if you don't, if you would allow me. Okay, um, and thank you, Councilman, for bringing this up. I did ask Erica to get two, um, photo slides to show. Of where, um, we have Doug Orr, um, and I, I knew Doug Orr personally. Um, and you know, he. A wonderful resident and certainly a very civic minded, um, individual who did a lot for our community as we heard from Tom Webb and. And Roland Rivera. Um, my point is this, we have, uh, him acknowledged. In the Hall of Fame at the Rec Center and if Erica, if you can put that up. Very few individuals, I think there's, there's less than a handful. Um, are on there on our Rec Center Hall of Fame because of the work that he's done. We also, um. Created Doug Orr Way. We named the street. Doug Orr. Way. Near the Doug Orr Plumbing Business about three years ago, I believe. Um, so twice.
Nineteen, two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen. Okay, so we have. Memorial, memorialized this individual who has done so much for our city. Um, my point is this, I think that. Instead of, we have very limited assets, assets. Um, Prince Field was named Prince Field because they donated that family, as we said. Um, Councilman, that family, the Prince family donated the land for Prince Field. Um, does it mean anything to us when we name something after someone? Or is it something that, you know, um, just down the road, oh, we'll rename it or we'll keep naming it. Um, our assets are very valuable and they're known by certain names. Stafford Park. Is named after an individual. Um. Unfortunately, an officer who lost his life, um, while serving our city. I feel that. The best way for us to, um, move forward with this kind of thing. And since I've been on the council, I can tell you I've had. I'm sorry if you're hearing the announcements from the airport. Um, since I've been on the council, we have had at least probably a handful. Of requests from family members and friends of individuals. That have given a lot to our city. Um, and we have been asked to name the rec center after them. Prince Field has been asked to be named after them, um, and these are different individuals since I've been on the council. Um. And, and we've said, no, that, um, these. These areas are already named after someone or they're already known by a certain name. Um, we do have the Hall of Fame for them. And in the case of a recent council member. Um, we. Dedicated, you know, we had a ceremony, um, acknowledging. Um, his contributions, we've named a street after him and what the family chose to do is hold a tournament. In their name, and I think going forward, this is a much better. Way to memorialize someone's achievements. Um, is to suggest to the family and with the support of our rec center that a tournament, perhaps baseball or. Football, I'm, I'm not really sure what his favorite sport was, but that an annual tournament is held in their name. Um, similar to for Jim Cottle, who was a former. Um, councilman and also very, very active in recreation and, um, for our city. The family ultimately decided to, um, do a golf tournament, um, in their name. That raises money to encourage, um. Uh, more young people to use recreational facilities and have access to them. But I think that, that to me is more of a way of the future than just taking existing assets and, you know, renaming them. Um. We have acknowledged his contributions. The Hall of Fame at City, at, uh, the Rec Center, if any of you go by. And Eric, I don't know if you got the pictures on there, but, um, it's, you know, just a few names and it, um. It's, that's a big deal to be on there. And naming a street after someone, that's, you know, a certain portion of a street. Um, I will not vote for, um, changing the name of Prince Field. I think there's other ways to, um, you know, and, and Mr. Orr, I know had moved away from the city. He's. Um, I think he was a resident of another state. Um. For several years. He made a lot of contributions to our city and I think that there are other ways for, um. For us to work with. Uh, the friends and family members on something. My suggestion is a tournament. Um, but there could be other things.
Um, perhaps we can do, um, what we've done before, I think for other members of the community or it could be a Douglas Orr Day. My proclamation, as I think we're looking for a recognition. Um, because he was such a tremendous asset, gave so much to the community. I mean, for you to give your, your time. I think is more valuable than money and he's done both. So.
And Councilwoman, I'd like to say, you know, uh, the members that spoke, I mean, the people that spoke. Um, about Doug Orr. Um, also, they are, are, are people that have contributed a lot to our community. A lot to our community and you know, it's unfortunately, we have very limited assets, so we can't. I don't think that, um. It's wise, um, to be renaming. Um, something that's already been named a certain way or known a certain way as, um. You know, after someone, and I understand the emotions, you know, that, that flow, but. Uh, a tournament or like you said, a proclamation of a day or something else can be done. It's a much more living. Acknowledgement of, um, of. Way to memorialize them.
I mean, I can see where we don't, um. But repeat recognition on city assets, which I, I didn't know. Thank you, mayor, for providing that information. I did not know that he was recognized on two city assets already. But definitely I don't want to, I want his name to be, um, recognized and I think it'd be honorary to. Um, proclaim a Douglas Orr Day. And that way he's annually continuously, because like you said, it, it takes time and effort to create those tournaments, right? At the end of the day, but. I mean, the councilman, if you have any feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be in favor of adding his name if we, if we were gonna. You know, and obviously there, there's a certain amount of decorum, right? You wouldn't have, you know. You wouldn't have so renamed the field at Stafford Park because that, that's a memorial of. Of a, of a officer that, that passed, so I would understand that that, that wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be in favor of something like that. Uh, but if it's keeping the name Prince Field and we're adding it, I mean, and again. I think everybody has their biases. I, I lived my whole life in this town. I know that, uh, everybody's, uh, Little League jerseys, I mean, the, you know, Doug Orr was an institution. Uh, and, you know. People that I respect, I mean, I think I've been in this town a long time, I've been in this town for fifty years and you look at somebody that Tom Webb's been here like seventy years. Right? So the, the view that, that kind of like, uh, outdated me in this town. It's people that I respect, people that have given to this community and when you see. People that have done that much for this community asking us to pay homage. I mean, if, if we were going to replace Prince Field and then it wouldn't be called Prince Field anymore. I wouldn't be in favor of it and I, and I understand your point. I, I think that it's a debatable issue. But I, I would be in, in favor of adding his name to, uh, to the park.
All right, let's call the vote.
Well, you want to ask? No, I think that's background noise of the mayors, but.
Councilman Vasquez. You're on mute.
Yep, um, listen, I'm, I, 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 I imagine he did, he did some great things for us and I'm. And I'm, I'm in favor of that, but I'm, I'm with the mayor on this one. I think, uh, you know, holding a tournament in his name is another way. He's got some other recognitions, uh, which are great. Um, that's where I would be. I don't know if you guys heard me over there.
We, we heard you.
Thank you.
Councilman, thank you.
Vice Mayor, I know you asked for a vote, but no one's made a motion yet, so I think, um.
Make the motion since you brought it up.
The new renaming of Prince Field at Douglas Orr Park.
On the motion, um, if it passes, I think it would be best, I, I mean. One of the things that we'll do is we'll look at any of the donation agreements or any of the city's history that might.
Vice Mayor, could, excuse me, I'm going through TSA. Could I ask you to hold off on the vote until I get to the other side? Okay, thank you.
So I, I'd like to look at the title and see if there's any restrictions or anything like that. And then, you know, obviously if there is, we'll come back to you and let you know.
So seconded barring any restrictions that you find.
We're just going to wait for the mayor to come back in.
Actually, Vice Mayor, I did want to make a mention that item F, I'm going to be deferring to the next meeting.
Okay.
And I didn't, um, say it at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm not here, thank you. So, um.
Tackle G while we wait for her to get through TSA?
Through the chair.
Councilman.
On, 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 on G, on the appointment of Miami-Dade County League of Cities Director and Alternate for the twenty-four, twenty-five session, I would like to offer that some of my personal circumstances have changed a, a lot over this last year, health-wise. And it's been an honor for me to serve as a director on the League of Cities, representing Miami Springs with the alternate Councilman Santin. I would like to offer up that I would be happy to continue to serve out the term, but I would not be available to serve another term as a director and alternate.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your time on serving on the League of Cities for us on behalf of the city. So did you have an appointment to make or a recommendation?
Sure, I'd like to recommend that, recommend Councilman Santin as a director, since he's been an alternate. And, you know, the other, the other two of you, Councilwoman Bravo, maybe you would serve as an alternate. I don't think you've served. But anyway, the other one would be Councilman Fahed. And now he, I know he attends a lot of the meetings, even though he's, even when he's not a member or a director. So that would be an overall recommendation.
Okay, so.
I'm, I'm okay with it. If you guys wanna be director and alternate.
Yeah, we'll accept.
Okay. So if you guys accept and, and the Councilman and I are in agreement, I think that's consensus on that.
We need a motion on that? Do we need a motion?
Okay, motion.
I'll make the motion that for the twenty-four, twenty-five session of the Miami-Dade County League of Cities, Councilman Santin serves as a director and Councilman Fahed as an alternate for that session. I think that begins in a few months. Erica, you can let us know. But anyway, that's the motion.
Okay.
Can we have, I think you had mentioned the Vice Mayor as an alternate?
I did. And I saw, I saw her shaking her head as, as, as I was saying it. So.
If you only knew the amount of things I.
All right, I'm already gonna be in the meeting. So I, I don't mind being the alternate.
Okay. So, so just to clarify, the motion is that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor.
In that case, I second the motion.
Okay, motion second.
Vice Mayor Bravo? Yes. Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor, are you available?
Yes, I am. I'm through TSA. Yes, and I vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you wanna call that vote now?
Right. Mayor, we're gonna call a vote on twelve D. I have a, a motion in a second.
Could you tell me what the motion is?
That was for Douglas Orr.
Do you wanna repeat it, Councilman Santin?
Repeat the motion, please.
To rename Prince Field in honor of Douglas Orr, Prince Field at Douglas Orr Park, pending that there's no covenants or, you know.
Restrictions.
Restrictions put in by the family or other, you know, entities that might not allow.
Okay, call the vote. Vice Mayor Bravo? Yes. Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
No.
Mayor Mitchell?
Erica, I'm sorry, I'm clarifying it. The, the vote, the motion is to name the field, Prince Field at Doug Orr Parker, or Doug Orr Park at Prince Field, right?
Correct. Pending any restrictions or legal review.
Okay, my vote's no.
Okay, the motion carries thirty-two.
All right, so we're moving on to twelve E. A request by Councilman Santin.
Bring this request to discuss pedestrian safety around the circle. And, you know, hopefully, we can come to consensus directing city manager and staff to pursue, you know, recommendations and solutions to actually help with the pedestrian safety and mobility. You know, this all kind of goes and ties together with the, even parking, you know, I think walkability, connectability to our central business district or our downtown circle is getting more and more used and important that we consider their safety. I see it all the time. I'm, I'm in the farmer's market and a lot frequently and, and I'm seeing, you know, families trying to cross over with strollers. And it's just gonna get, I mean, to think that fifty-one units, two bedrooms and three bedrooms are not gonna have children, middle-aged kids. What's the, what's the natural thing that these kids are gonna do? I did it when I was young, was look for a place to go play. And now you gotta, I'm not saying that you wanna encourage people to go there, but that's the reality. We have a park. It's called a city park, Glen Curtis Circle Park. These kids are gonna try to cross over, no matter, so don't go over there. No, they're gonna go over there. So considering that we are conscious that this is gonna happen, more people are gonna have an attraction to go into our circle. We got this memorial, both the War One and possibly Warwood, I mean, Warwood One and, and the Colonel One with the veterans, we're gonna have a lot more visitors into our downtown area. So I just think that's something that we need to address first is pedestrian safety. And I think we could push through our contacts, city commissioners, senators, representatives, who also are very concerned about pedestrian traffic and safety. I mean, that's part of the mission statement of most transportation departments. So just to, just leave it to the county directors and just say that we're not gonna do anything because our whole mission is to get one person from the other side of the bridge to the other. It's, I'm sorry, but uncalled for and unacceptable. So there's ways of doing it. There's, we could do, you know, elevated crosswalks. And that kind of slows down, calms down traffic. I mean, at the end of the day, we're not saying to have nobody come over from the other side. We're just saying that when you cross over, you need to make sure that the pedestrians are safe. And if it causes them a headache, well, I'm sorry, safety comes first. Also, there's ways of doing reflective markers, you know, that you see on, 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 on the, on the street. There's a section where the police chief, if he was here, he would tell you where most of the accident or most of the concern is. They're, they're pretty much going at a speed for one left lane to the right when they're not supposed to. Well, they can easily put some markers, you know, the reflective ones. So they're kind of almost gear them. I'm not saying that it's gonna stop them, not a mark, it's not a tone, but it's enough to at least, you know, make an effort to try to get this thing a little bit more safe. And so that's my ultimate thing is just to try to see how we can put the pressure at the city, uh, sorry, at the county level to ease pedestrian traffic into our downtown, because that's what we were trying to encourage. It's the whole walkability, use, and viability of this area. And the only way we can do it is by at least getting, you know, the pedestrians safely from one place to the other, including Westward Drive. I mean, I know people think it's crazy, but we, if we could get crossover to west to the circle, connects to the rest of the downtown, you might actually stop those cars from speeding from one side of the other, because now they have no choice but to respect a crosswalk with signs that are giving you indication of pedestrian. So I just want a, you know, a huge effort. I know I'm gonna do my part on the sidelines, but I want, you know, recommendations from the, from the staff and city manager, what we can do to better this, and then try to get a team effort to get it accomplished.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I, 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 I spoke on this the last time when we were talking about, and, and, and I know Councilman Santin has been a, a voice for this for some time now, that, that pedestrian safety, of people crossing the circle to get to the park or, or vice versa, to get to the other side, it has been a, a serious control. You know, I drive through the circle all the time and see the different things that people trying to cross there. And also, we, when, we're prompted me to speak on this the last time was the increasing parking, paper parking on the, on the east side of Curtis Parkway, which I wholeheartedly agree with. And I said at that time, increase it to parking, I think the mayor says something like fifty parking spots, including the ones we already have on Curtis Parkway, those people are gonna walk towards the center of the city, along the pathway that we already have. I think, I think this merits some discussion, some level. I don't have answers to how to go about this, but, you know, I have seen quite a few people trying to cross there. The cars that are driving westward towards the circle, you know, they're waiting for, they're watching the people that are coming around the circle to see if they could jump out there. And I don't think they're looking or see the pedestrians that may be crossing. So I think, I think this is an important issue to take up conversation to begin, right? Of how we, we can do this. And I know the county has issues about this as well, but, you know, I think one life is too precious. Not too for us to consider this. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to chime in. And, and I'd certainly appreciate the sentiments. I'm just thinking about it differently. I'm all in favor of increasing walkability, particularly as a matter of fact, you know, the idea that was, that was floated in the Economic Development Task Force, right? About widening the sidewalks on Westward Drive and adding parking. And, and I know that not everybody agrees with it. But it was the idea of like, maybe making those last two blocks westward, one, one lane, and increasing walkability there. I'm all in favor of that because that's what the restaurants are. I don't think that at this moment, we should be encouraging more walking to the circle, because there's really, other than a gazebo, there's really nothing there. And then you're, you're walking them through traffic, not to mention, we don't know. So everybody knows that that traffic gets really hectic in terms of traffic. As a matter of fact, and we were talking about parking, somebody had even floated the idea of having like parking in the circle, which I thought was kind of crazy, because then you'd be backing up into a, a roundabout. But supposedly, everybody in that parking garage of the one Curtis Parkway has to exit that parking garage and turn right turn only back into the circle, which is gonna be adding more traffic into an already chaotic area. I think that the best way that we can keep people safe is by not trying to encourage people to walk through the traffic of the circle and through the circle to get to the areas where the shops are. They should walk around and we should try to make that safer. But I just, and not to mention, I've seen when there's something happening at the circle, when they haven't closed the circle down for traffic, that you're driving behind somebody and people are rubbernecking, looking to see what's happening inside the circle, which makes it unsafe, but then for motorists. I was just, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that I think that right now, we need to see what is gonna happen in that circle, once we get fifty-one units filled with, with residents. We may find that you've got, like you said, kids running, you know, up and down and, and jumping into the gazebo. We may find that the traffic is so horrendous. And, and I just, making, making the circle more accessible for pedestrians means that you are going to just lock up traffic even more around the circle. And I just have a lot of concerns about what, what traffic around the circle is even gonna look like, once you have all these people and everybody having to, like, anybody coming out of that parking garage, supposedly, as per the plan, they can't turn left to go to CVS to Hialeah. They gotta turn right and go into the circle, go around the circle and come back around to get on Hook Square to go to Hialeah. I would caution us to just wait and see what's gonna happen there and not encourage pedestrian traffic to walk through the circle to get to all of the places that we're trying to promote. Because we, I, I really have concerns about what, what's gonna happen traffic-wise there. Like, I, I, it, to me, I feel like there's a lot of question marks and, and I wouldn't want us to make decisions until we kind of have a better sense of what's gonna happen.
All right, I have Roger Eliomadon that signed up to speak about this item. Thank you, Councilman.
So, yeah, I think you can either have a highway or you can have a main street. And I think this needs to be our main street. And I think the traffic that's going through the circle is not intending to come to Miami Springs. They're cutting through our community from Hialeah, going to the airport or wherever they work in Doral, as opposed to using Mylum Dairy Road or using Le June Road. And so right now, it's designed as a highway. It's designed to go fast. And this needs to be our main street, and it should be designed for the traffic that's going through. I'm not saying they can't come here, but they need to drive slowly and respect our city. And Florida's number one for pedestrian deaths. Dade County is probably number four in the state. I think we, we've, we're not as bad as Orlando and Tampa. And that's because of the way our roadways are designed. They are designed to move cars quickly. And we, so we have a main street that instead of being designed for us, for the residents of Miami Springs, is being designed to move cars from Hialeah to the airport. And I think it needs to be redesigned. We need to look at it. And, and I think creating tabled crosswalks would be a great idea to cause, force cars to slow down a little bit as they come into the neighborhood, because one day there's gonna be a kid crossing the street, gonna get nailed by a car coming in quickly from Hialeah. And, you know, who's, who's, you know, and we shouldn't have that on our conscience. That shouldn't be the way the city is designed. So, so pedestrian safety is paramount. Saturday, I ran into you at the farmer's market and I had an appointment to get a haircut at the spot. There's no legal crosswalk to cross from the farmer's market to the spot. To, if I wanted to do that legally, I would have to go south, cross over to the block where the new Jimmy John's in the gym is, and then cross north to go to, to the spot. There's, there's no way to get there. If you're, if you're in one of these new buildings and you wanna legally cross to go into the circle, you need to go all the way around Curtis Parkway on the north side by Papa John's and then cross again and then cross into the circle. Or you need to go the other way around, cross to the street to go to where the Jimmy John's in, then cross again and then cross north and then cross north and cross north and cross, 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 when it's something that's right there. Doesn't make sense when you have simple pedestrian paths available to have to go all the way around. And, and so we really, I, I think if we want this main street to be successful, we really need to look at slowing the traffic down. There's traffic because cars are cutting through. If we disincentivize cars' ability to cut through, they'll find another route. They'll, they'll, they'll go somewhere else. Again, if you build it, they will come. If this is designed as a highway, people will come and use it as a highway.
I mean, you brought up a good point. If you have to cross and cross and cross, now you're exposing the pedestrian even more. So I think, I don't know what city manager.
If you.
I was gonna ask you, I don't know, because I don't like to cross to there. I do know that there's like two, but where actually do we have it? Is, it's, it's just two places. I think it should be a consecutive thing that's happening around this.
Yeah, as, as a result of the, the parking study, I started taking a look at the entire business area and, and circle. And, and I, you, you look at it, and we're trying to create additional parking on Curtis Parkway. So I was looking at it from parking. If I park my car there and I close my door and I wanna go eat. So you can cross into the circle from Curtis, right? From where the, the, the parking is gonna be, or is some parking. You cross in there, there's a crosswalk that has the lights flashing, but then you can't go anywhere else. And once you're in the circle, you have to go back and, and leave. In order to get to the restaurants, you would, we would need another crosswalk. Same thing with Westward Drive. You can't get really to the circle from Westward Drive without really playing Frogger and taking your, your life, you know, into your hands. So, the, the, the question is, and I, I have a meeting coming up with, with Commissioner Cabrera, and I was gonna talk about the possibility of seeing if the county would consider it, because we have to go through the county. And, and see where that goes, because it, I, I walked it and it's, it's kind of dangerous. And in addition to that, this was one that actually one of the local business owners brought up. There's on Curtis Parkway on the side where you have Paco's Way, there's a crosswalk there that has the flashing lights that, that you can, you can cross over to the Starbucks site. But when you go further, I guess, towards Hialeah to the bridge, there's another crosswalk there. It's stamped, I think it's stamped asphalt, colored asphalt, right by where the Boring Girl's gonna go. And then Apple Dental's on the other side. And there's gonna be parking that we're gonna encourage people to park in along Canal Street. There, that's a dangerous crosswalk there, because there's no flashing lights and you have the people coming in from, from Hialeah. Had a pretty good clip. I mean, I park, when I go to, when I come in mornings, I go to Starbucks sometimes. And I mean, it takes me a while to back out of there. And I mean, it takes me a while to back out of there, because their cars are just.
Going fast.
Going fast, flying.
Do we have flashing lights there for slowdown coming into Miami Springs?
No, you gotta press the button.
No, no, incoming traffic from. Honestly, I wouldn't like a crosswalk there. I think that's the worst place to have a crosswalk. I'd come in a little bit more, but.
Warning at least.
Somebody somebody brought up the idea. You have people coming out of the Bar and Grill, you know, maybe.
Yeah.
A little inebriated. Going to their car and maybe taking the wrong step. So I. Uh it's just one of those things that I wanna explore. If the council gives me, is okay with it, I will pursue it. If they say, don't waste your time. But I think it's worth a question. I mean, especially, I'm just looking forward ahead. I mean, just looking ahead. Um for the parking and in the overall. You know, the overall business district.
Look, I think we had uh one of the residents here on the work the workshop, and she even mentioned that she's willing. To park, you know, from some distance and walk. But of course, if you go to one restaurant on Westwood Drive and all of a sudden you wanna go get something else. You're gonna go get your car and you're gonna move because that's not so friendly to get there. If not, they would have left the car on Westwood Drive, then maybe had a lot more space. So it all it all kind of ties together. But at the end of the day. Like we just mentioned, one person, we save one kid's life, one person's life. It's enough. I'm willing to fight it. And I think that, you know what, put their feet to the fire. If not, you tell that director from that county road, say, I want your name on this paper.
So I think.
So get the county commissioner people in there. That's the way we need.
It's just, I don't know when your meeting is with Commissioner Cabrera. I don't know if there's any, if I couldn't be a part of that meeting, if there's no sunshine issue.
Actually, the mayor is already, she kind of.
Okay.
Made contact until she's gonna be in that meeting.
Perfect. I think where I would like to see, I understand Councilman Fajad's concerns. I mean, you put more more accessibility to bodies, but at the end of the day, they're gonna do it anyways. People are gonna walk across anyway. So I'd rather just. I'm surprised at the county when they laid out the circle and it take into consideration connecting the dots. I mean, I would, right? Um so I'd like to see, I don't know if I.
I can speak to that. I can speak to that. Um. When the county, and I think I mentioned this last meeting. Um the circle, you know, we had three lane circle, three lanes of traffic. When it was proposed um that we make a crosswalk to the circle and it was. Um two young residents who um proposed it, you know, to make the circle accessible as a part. To that we make a crosswalk there and because it's a county road, the circle is a county road, it's um east to west Curtis Parkway, you know, those are all county roads. Our state roads, I guess, but the county owns that one. And um it was proposed that we have. A pedestrian crosswalk to the circle. That's what we wanted. In making a pedestrian crosswalk to the circle, and I have no problem with this, I thought it was great, we lost a lane. Because you cannot cross safely three lanes of traffic. And the circle and the county, looking at the circle, which is their circle, they said it doesn't meet the current state, you know, roads are. Have certain state statutes, um designs, they're not statutes, but designs. So that it's consistent that, and the reason for that makes sense, that if I drive from here into Hialeah to Miami Lakes, pretty much. I can expect the road to be similar, to have similar. Um uh design, similar traffic stops, you know, the lights and everything else. You know, it's not like, oh, now I'm in this city. I have, you know, everything changes. So there's a certain design for a circle. We, because the circle was so old, it didn't meet that current design. And to make it accessible, to make a pedestrian crossing, one of the things was you cannot cross through three lanes of traffic. So that's why the traffic, the lane was reduced. I, to me, I think it looks much better. I think it was a great idea. Um there was so much flack from the community. Because why can't we just build the pedestrian crossing and you know, why do we have to get rid of? You can't do that. Can't make a pedestrian crossing, you know, this is. Le Arc de Triomphe in France. Um so just keep that in mind, and I'm all for pedestrian and bicycle safety, you know, that's prime for me. So any way we can. Encourage, promote, make it, you know, facilitate more people walking and riding bikes and just being outdoors, especially in Miami Springs. I'm all for it. But I do think um when we're talking about, well, we want them to do this and we want them to do that. Every action that we want them to do may be possible, but there may be substantial other actions that are necessary and to make that possible. And that ultimately comes down to the design, roadway design and and. And you know, we're talking about liability. One of the biggest things with liability is that you want to. Be consistent with what was required, you know, not I rigged it or I changed it or this isn't the actual design. We made it a little bit different. Because then we are liable.
To the chair. Well, considering those two ladies did what they did, this has been done. It's already there. The two two, the two roads that caused the change because it wasn't conforming is now there. So to add the crosswalks, they do not need to take any more lanes off. They the damage was already done. If you wanna call it damage, I don't think it's damage at all, but.
I'm sorry, let me.
There's no three lanes there anymore. Pardon me, but there's no three more lanes.
Councilman, and let me, um I meant to answer that, and I got off track. The reason that at that time, and this was um I think twenty twenty around when it was um, you know, being proposed. And unfortunately, those two ladies that designed it, they got so much flack, you know, they kind of like, you know, from the community. Of whose idea was this? It's ultimately, nobody likes change, like I've said, but nobody likes things the way they are either. So, you know, we have to move forward with what we think is is reasonable and good for the community. Um. But one of the things at that time, when we wanted another crosswalk into the the Starbucks area. Um the county at that time said they wouldn't provide it because there wasn't another means to provide safe access. Of um and the reason that the crosswalk was placed where it was is because um the cars have. Ample time to kind of make the circle and slow down, and most of them are going on Curtis as they're coming from Hialeah. Most of them are going on Curtis, not going around the circle. So there in itself, that route makes it so that there's less vehicles. Right before the pedestrian crossing. And those are all things that they take into account. And it and it, I may not be explaining it well, but. In essence, what you're doing is there's a break there of if twenty cars are coming in from the bridge. Most of those twenty cars are continuing on Curtis before they get to the pedestrian crossing. But if we move, if the pedestrian crossing were put over toward westward, the pedestrians would be subjected to those twenty cars coming in at one time. Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't know if I'm explaining it well. And those are all factors that need to, that they have to take into account to make it safe, because ultimately what we want is, you know, safety and accessibility. But we we wanna make sure that that if we have a pedestrian crosswalk, that it really is. Um a safe way for, you know, for people to to cross it. So this is just more conversations that'll have to be taken with the county. Um I I just wanna prepare everyone that it's not. You know, create one lane here or there. Every action. Um may take a lot of other actions that we may like, we may not, but that's fine. If we decide this is what we want, this is what we want. We pursue it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I I'm just gonna, nobody here is. Promoting the endangerment of children, right? Like, that's not what we're talking about. The the discussion item says. To have recommendations and solutions to help increase pedestrian safeability to the circle. There isn't anything at the sucker at the circle other than a gazebo. It's nice when there's not a lot of traffic. Yep, I walked across, right? But right now, what we did was we created a crosswalk by the Cavalier Clock. That's not at a natural place where cars stop. Cars are stopping because someone's crossing, whereas on Westwood Drive and leading up. You you are, you have a crosswalk that's just before you get to a stop sign or a yield sign. But in the roundabout, they have the right of way. Stopping cars or trying to cross where there's no reason for the cars to even slow down. Because the only thing that would require them to slow down is the crosswalk, I don't think is the best course of action. If you're at the Farmer's Market and you need to go to the spot, there's a light at Hook Square. You could cross there. Maybe I I'm not, I'm not against. Crosswalks to increase the walkability, to make it more accessible. I just, I don't think that. The going through the circle as a closed, the fastest way from point A to point B. Is the right way to do it. I think that we should try to think about where we could crosswalks. To help things more accessible, but do it in places where cars are naturally already slowing down because they're about to enter. A a a roundabout where they have to yield because the people in the roundabout have the right of way. If we if we like in Hollywood Beach, they have like a giant circle that like or like Saint John Circle in Fort Myers. This is a circle that had a whole bunch of things in there. Like, obviously, you're bringing people in. But right now, and again. I I'm not even, I'm open to the discussion. But we're going to increase traffic. I understand what Rogelio is saying, right? Like, do you want this to be a highway? Yeah, but like, the traffic is coming. Because there's fifty-one, two and three bedroom units that are gonna be online in a couple of months. And all of those people are being forced to drive their cars through that circle. So that's just increasing the amount of traffic. And I just, I think we should just be cautious. See how things are gonna work. Let's, if we already have a meeting with the county, let's talk about crosswalks. I mean, at the end of the day, it's their road anyways, but. I just, we have a crosswalk that crosses a street. I I don't think that that was the best place to put that crosswalk. It's there and it leads into basically a dead end because it leads into the circle. There's no way out of it. I think that we should increase walkability of around the circle to get to all the different places that we want people to go. I just would caution us from, again, and I'm and and maybe that's the broader point of what you're trying to make. I appreciate the discussion. But when I read this and it says, increase pedestrians to the circle. I don't feel like we, right now, until we know what's gonna happen when one Curtis Parkway gets up and running. I don't think that we should be promoting more people going into the circle. I think that that we should increase walkability around to help get to the restaurants. That's my only concern. I think that we should be cautious. Doesn't mean that I'll always be against it. I just think that we should wait and see how things are gonna look.
To the chair, yeah. And I mean, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, maybe it was just the way it was written, but it's a circle. Connecting the building to the rest of the district. But the circle obviously plays a part in that walkability. But obviously, not just to that point, it's a point of end. But yes, as a main point to get to these places. It's something that's gonna happen, and I just still think it's gonna happen naturally. And it's gonna be unavoidable, so you know.
I think.
It takes time to get these things done. So it's like, like they just mentioned, it's these things don't happen that easy as much as they have now, I think. Yeah, it's quick, uh maybe uh Rogelio will know, quit uh build uh methods to try to. Get these things done a little quicker so they won't go through all the tape. It's still time, so.
I like to see the the more pedestrian friendly going around the circle, not necessarily into the circle. I love the circle. I love the greenery. I like that it's a spot that it's, you can expect it overall to be calm. I can perhaps walk there at one point, read a book. Get some, maybe some fresher, not so traffic hours. But when I mentioned the other day that we had kids out there playing with footballs. And I was driving, I was scared that the football may hit my car. And then we'll cause an influx of of a triple effect. Of of accidents. I love the idea of more of the pedestrian friendly connecting around so that we could get.
Right.
From both the north and south side.
Right.
So that we can access those restaurants. And then let's let's leave it like a free fall right now. I mean, at the end of the day, it's. It's play at your own risk. And I know what you're trying to say in the safety. But I've been here for thirty years, all my life, and I I never thought to really go to the park to play because I always knew. The cars were dangerous. Um so I don't know, I I wouldn't wanna attract more uh traffic. To hang out in their circle, because I think that's what's gonna happen. If you get pedestrians to access the circle in the park. They may be inclined to hang out, to play. And so my concern really is the 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 external. Um obsolescence that it can create with the traffic, which will cause another um safety issue. But yes, I agree that we should go ahead and look at more pedestrian friendly around the circle because we need it. If not, the restaurants and everything that's coming, they're probably gonna suffer, to be honest. And to get the kids safely around too, because if they're gonna. Let's say they wanna, they're gonna go, but if they wanna go and enjoy those surrounding areas, at least now, kids alike, both elderly, both. Uh people our age of of all different ages can can walk. Cause I'm seeing here, we do have one crosswalk and one that's not even here. So it's like. So, I mean, they're gonna meet with Cabrera. Let's see what they bring back. But we need to add something. It can't stay like that, is what you're saying.
Uh I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, besides obviously pedestrian traffic, to me is to discourage people to come through this area. That needs to be for the business. Main street, no, no toll, just, you know, if it comes, you know, happens in Hollywood, if you go into those there or Miracle Mile, whatever it is. You're going through there, you know that you're gonna have traffic at certain time. But most of the people are looking for places to stay there. So I mean, to go a bit to to patronize. So why? I'm just trying to. I'm trying to slow it down more, slow it down as much as possible. And I really, another D L T and County Roads, their their. Their whole mission is to get me to be, and they really don't care how you get from the other place. But I do.
Locking up, I'm sorry, Victor, I'll be I'll be done in a second, then you can go. I worry about locking up the traffic more when we are uncertain about. How bad it's gonna get locked up when you've got that entire building emptying into the circle. I I get it, like we've, you know, slow it down, but then like what's gonna happen? Like it, I just. Lot of uncertainty, lot of uncertainty. Right now, I I'd rather kind of wait and see. Uh but I think theme of the day is let J C have a crack at it. He's gonna be talking to to uh the county. Let's give him a crack at it.
Councilman Faher will close out with you.
Oh, that's okay. I'll take that as a compliment. Councilman Faher, um listen, we just to add, you know, to to. You know, the. There there are two, uh the the circle, uh the 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 circle in Curtis Parkway. The design of the streets is one way on the west side of it and another way on the east side of it. As as Walter was saying earlier, you know, you get from uh, you you're at the, you're at the, you know, where the clock is. Um I think it's kind of relatively easy to cross Curtis Parkway there. There's a, there's a, there's a stop sign there. But once you get to the other side, there is no uh sidewalk or routine way to get across. Uh South Royal, you got traffic that backs up by the bridge to get to that side of of the circle. As opposed to the other side where you do have a crosswalk uh on North Royal. Over to uh to the uh the sandwich shop, then you can cross westward, right? And you could even cross uh from westward to Curtis Parkway. It's a different configuration of traffic flow. And just another thing to to be thought about, but just to throw it in there, because it is, it it is quite different to go to that side of the circle. And to come back around to the uh to the westward side.
To the chair. One of the points of why I'm bringing this up, I'm referencing the Westwood Drive, is because you just mentioned the crosswalk from Papa John's to. To Curtis Parkway or to the center where the clock is at. This is where I saw most people trying to cross over, but those cars are going so fast from the Starbucks to there.
Yes, yes.
That is late almost sometimes. So my whole point is to try to make it, to slow it down. Make it more difficult for them to pick up the speed. Obviously, a crosswalk will do it. They have no choice. This thing is flashing lights on. They're not gonna be able to take off from Ponciana or Starbucks. Where they start to just put speed, even getting to the one that connects from Curtis to the circle. Believe it or not, unless you press that button, that thing is not notifying that your pedestrian is about to cross off. And those cars are at that point are going so fast, it, believe me, there's good chances that you could get run over there. So my whole point is to try to slow that, that area to me is the most dangerous thing. And they have done nothing to save. To pedestrians in general, even from the crosswalks that they approved, because they allowed an area where you can go pretty fast. And that's my point.
So.
Slow it down.
City manager will report back to you with the findings from.
I think we're already gonna confess this, that we're gonna allow uh the city manager to take the steps and it it's worth a discussion. I, I am looking, I, I just out of curiosity, I logged on, I did the Google Maps. And you can see crosswalks all the way around. I mean, they're not with flashing lights and they may be dangerous to cross on those crosswalks. But there are crosswalks that connect all the way around the circle. Like I think it's Rahelio mentioned, he ended up going out of the way to get to the spot barber shop. But there is connectivity. So the county may, the county, the county may come back to me and say, there is connectivity, but
So how, but the speed is the problem.
No, 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 I agree, I agree.
They're going thirty, forty miles per hour.
I'm just going to, I'm going to have the discussion with them. But I'm trying to take a look.
I think I'll, I'll show you afterwards. There's, there's a crosswalk on Hook Square. But you have to go further east towards the Berry's Cleaner and then go across and then come back. But people stop at that light when they're not blocking the box at five o'clock, but they stop you know, well before the Berry's Cleaner, maybe, maybe a crosswalk there so that you're going straight to the Adventist property and not having to go a little bit further. I mean, I you know, it's also a county road.
Yeah.
There.
Look, I swear to conversation if that, that's okay with you guys and
I think, I would, look, I think what we need to do, and I'm about to board the plane. I think what we need to do is, is let the county know, along with the other things that we're going to talk about, because this isn't the, what we're having the meeting for, but we can certainly bring it up. Um, is that we want increased pedestrian safety at the circle. We have more people coming in and we have restaurants and we want them to, you know, their engineering, traffic engineering group to, which is Public Works and Transportation and Public Works to look at the circle, revisit it and improve the pedestrian accessibility throughout the area, you know, throughout that area.
Perfect. All right. So we're on agreement to just check back with city managers to see what, what reports he has with us and if we can improve the circle. Um, so we're going to go to reports and recommendations. Our city attorney.
Um, Vice Mayor, Mayor, have a safe flight. Uh, and Council, I just want to thank you for your vote of confidence this evening. It is, as I've said always, um, it really is my firm's pleasure and mine to serve the city. And as you know, I always give credit where it's due. I really want to thank Roger Poe from my office, who over the last year filled in significantly while I was on maternity leave. And, you know, the rest of the Wyserota team, we really do appreciate the city and all of you. We're, we're happy to work with our new manager and our continued staff and all of the, the Miami Springs team to make Miami Springs really, you guys have a vision. Uh, this council is really moving forward and we're really excited to be a part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. That means a lot, considering that you've seen many councils come through. Um, city manager?
Uh, yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. The golf course is getting near to opening. We're looking at later on in this month at March. Um, I do have a meeting this week with the architect and staff over there just to make sure that I'm okay with announcing that date. So I will be providing you with a date once I, once I have that. Once I feel certain that it's going to open up on that date. Um, also speaking of the golf course, I received, uh, in speaking with the director, Paul Dell today, he informed me of that he will be retiring uh, come October, I mean, I'm sorry, April twenty-fourth. So I just wanted to let you know that. Um, I'll begin the, the search for his replacement immediately. The Veterans Memorial, we had we received the bids. Fortunately, it was one bid. And it did come in significantly higher than the budgeted amount. So I'm going to be reviewing that and you know, speaking with our attorney, see if I can negotiate with that one bidder and say, hey, what's, what's happening here? But I just want to let you know that, give you, give you an update on that, that it's, you won't be seeing that contract coming to you for approval just yet. Um, I wanted to announce that the Easter egg hunt is on Saturday, March thirtieth at, at ten AM and for tickets, call the community center. And the Easter egg drop as well. Um, call the community center for, to, you know, have them come and drop Easter egg, Easter eggs at your house. And that's my update.
Great. And we'll start with Councilman Fahad.
Thank you to everyone. Thank you, Erica and Heidi. You guys are great and are well deserving of the vote of confidence. And thank you to uh, all of you. I think that we, we come here and we, we talk about kind of naughty issues and, and we find solutions and proud to be a part of it.
All right, Councilman Vasquez.
Uh, yes, just two quick things, Emily. Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay. Just want to show you the result of my surgery last week on my right hand. This is why I decided to stay home today. It's still a little sore. And it'll be a total of six weeks for complete recovery. That's in stages. Um, and they did some arthroscopic, you know, work on there on my, on my thumb. And I, and to second, Councilman Fahad and, and, and and Heidi, great, thank you for your gracious comment. I, I do feel that we've got a team here of folks that, you know, we go at it and we have, we're passionate about it and and we disagree and we agree a lot and we find, most importantly, a lot of common ground, which Councilman Fahad asked us to consider in his opening prayer. So I'm really, I'm really proud of you guys. And I hope to see you in, in two weeks, in, in, in the, on the days.
I think the Councilman Fahad and Councilman Vasquez has said it well. Uh, I'm fortunate considering this is my rookie year to work with such a great group. So I'm going to have a camper. Thank you.
You're Rookie All-American.
Yeah.
Rookie of the year.
My rookie of the, my rookie moments were great up here. I don't know. The good thing is you come in as a rookie, you don't really know what's going on. So you just like trickle through and amazingly things get done. And nobody's hitting you with a hammer because you're a rookie. All right. Well, I just want to thank the staff and my council for a very productive meeting. Thank you for the residents and community members that came out to discuss very important items, especially if you have so much talent and knowledge and hanging out with us. I, I hope we made you happy. I was going to just say congratulations to Sergeant Gary Fetters on his retirement and the, the other police officers that got their promotions. And I hope everybody has a very good night and we will see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.